With that then, we'll go ahead and call to order the February 16th meeting, 2022 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. We apologize for a bit of a late start. I know we advertised the start at three with the open session. We did have closed session items and just wrapped that up about five minutes ago. So with that then, I'll call the meeting to order. So let's go ahead and call the role to establish a quorum first, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting, this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, February 20th at 8:00 PM on Channel 14.
Okay, thank you Flo. With Supervisor Desmond, would you please pledge allegiance, please? Please rise.
Flag up there or no?
Do you have a flag?
You want it on the screen? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the world for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rich. And there's a flag in the, if you can see the chambers, it's there and kind of.
I saw, thank you.
Well, hopefully with our next session, we'll be back in chambers and in person and look forward to that. So, okay, with that then, we've got again, a pretty full agenda this afternoon and we do have callers already in the queue and we have two items held over from yesterday which are timed. So unless there's any other orders of business, Madam Clerk, we'll just go right into the first item then.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read the meeting announcement first. "The Board of Supervisors encourages public participation during the meeting. In compliance with directives of the county, state and centers for disease control and prevention, this meeting is broadcast live and close to in-person attendance. Meeting procedures are subject to change based on the recommended public health and safety guidelines. To make a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time and your patience is appreciated. I will ask clerk staff to transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue remains open until the public comment period is closed for that item. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comments will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures."
Thanks Flo. I'll just reiterate that if folks wish to call in on any item that's on the agenda or not on the agenda, the 916-875-2500 number is the number to call. And with that, we have received some written comments on some of the items that have come in this afternoon or previously to the hearings. So, all right, very good, let's get started.
Item one, approve the 2020 Sacramento International Airport Master Plan. Certify the final supplemental environmental impact report. Adopt the California Environmental Quality Act findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. The environmental determination is a final supplemental environmental impact report.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. And I know we have some presenters on this, so I believe Cindy Nichols, our airports director, is along with her staff will be presenting this item. And there's pretty voluminous written information behind it and they have a PowerPoint. So Cindy, I'll turn to you.
Great, thank you so much Chair Natoli and good afternoon supervisors. I'm Cindy Nichols, Director of Airports for the County. Today's the culmination of work that began in 2014 on an updated master plan for Sacramento International Airport, also known as SMF, and the associated final supplemental environmental impact report under SEQA. The master plan sets the 20-year vision for facilities that would need to be provided to serve our region's passengers and air cargo needs. In a minute, TJ Chen, Deputy Director of Planning and Development, will describe our approach to anticipating activity levels given the tremendous uncertainty in the industry right now to ensure that we have facilities in place when they're needed. He'll also talk about the many forms in which we've received external input throughout this process, our mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and the near-term projects and funding that will come before you for approval after today's actions for projects needed in the next five years. Collectively, we're calling those near-term projects SMF Forward. I'll now turn it over to TJ.
Thank you Cindy, good afternoon supervisors. First of all, thank you all for the opportunity to present the final Sacramento International Airport 2020 Master Plan and the associate SEQA EIR document.
TJ, if I could just for one minute, let me interrupt you. I just wanted to note for the clerk, we do have some off-agenda folks that were on hold. We'll take this item and then following this item, we can take the off-agenda callers. So of those that are on hold, so once we've concluded this item, it'll get us back on schedule a bit. I'll go ahead and take the off-agenda calls, is that okay, Madam Clerk?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, so we can let folks know, okay. Sorry TJ, I wanted to be sure.
Okay. Previously, the Board of Supervisors accepted the draft 2020 Airport Master Plan update on July 28th, 2020 and the Director of County Planning and Environmental Review per to begin the required SEQA environmental impact report. Today's presentation will provide an overview of the final 2020 SMF Master Plan update and the associated final supplemental EIR. Next slide, please. Just a quick overview, an airport master plan is a comprehensive study with the primary objective of developing short, median and long-term development plans and concepts to meet future aviation demand typically within a 20-year horizon. To achieve this objective, an airport master plan process takes an inventory of existing facilities, develops new aviation forecasts, facility requirements and development alternatives, then makes recommendation for future development. This master plan update was prepared in accordance with FAA planning elements and requirements. Additionally, aviation forecasts require FAA approval. This master plan update effort began in 2024 as a continuation and a supplement to the previous 2004 to 2007 airport master plan with a goal of up, updated forecast market conditions and lessons learned for operating the airport since the big bill. The reason for taking nearly eight years to complete this master plan was mostly due to, first, rapid growth in plane passenger between 2016 and 2019, nearly 10% annually, which exceeded the initial growth projection. And second, significant negative impact due to COVID-19 in 2020 and 2021. Next slide, please. The table here shows the in-plane passenger forecast. In this master plan, in-plane passenger forecast is referred to as planning activity levels or PALS, which was developed pre-COVID and included three passenger forecast scenarios, baseline, low growth and high growth. Each PALS represents an approximate five-year horizon. The key point of this table is the AHR or average annual growth rate, which is indicated on the right side of this table. The baseline forecast has a 2.6% AHR. Low-growth scenario forecast and high-growth scenario forecast having a 1.9% AGR and 3.2% AGR respectively. The in-plane passenger forecast associated AGR for this master plan update were approved by the FAA. Next slide, please. As we all know, COVID-19 severely impacted the aviation industry. Since the beginning of the pandemic, the department has closely monitored passenger activity. In-plane passengers dipped to as low as 5% of 2019 passenger volume in 2020, but SMF has since recovered to approximately 85% of 2019 passenger volume in the recent months. The recovery estimate has been robust and is consistently 10 to 15% above the national average in 2021. You probably also noticed that this graph only project growth to PALS 2. This is because the immediate focus for the department upon the adoption of the updated airport master plan are the near-term projects to meet PALS 2 activities. With a revised forecast, it's projected that in-plane passengers will reach PALS 2 around 2027, just five years away. Because large capital project typically takes three to four years to design and construct, focus on PALS 2 project is necessary and appropriate. In later slides, I will focus on near-term projects, contemplate for SMF Forward program, which is intended to meet PALS 2 demand. Next slide, please. A successful airport master plan process require community outreach and stakeholder engagement. For this airport master plan update, the department posted master plan chapters and its second summary on airport's website since May of 2020. Conducted stakeholder outreach through airport technical advisory committee meetings and airline representative meetings. Unfortunately, the department was not able to hold traditional in-person public outreach workshop due to COVID. Instead, the public outreach was conducted through a virtual public engagement and outreach platform. A virtual public workshop was held from May 22nd through May 29th of 2020. The workshop was advertised in traditional and social media. A narrative video for the master plan update was produced and made available for public viewing. A portal was made available for questions or comments. Comments were tracked, responded to and posted. Next slide, please. Thirty-seven comments were received through the virtual outreach effort. Of the 37 comments, we see 34 comments were related to aircraft noise. Most of, most of, most noise comments were related to the 2015 FAA implementation of the Next Gen at SMF and were previously raised and addressed by department staff. Environmental review process under SEQA addressed noise concerns specific to SEQA requirements. This airport master plan update does not affect or alter the established and published departure procedures. This airport master plan update does not. Since the 2015, the department staff have conducted extensive coordination with constituents and FAA on noise-related issues. The department is committed to continue to coordinate with constituents on noise issues. It's important to note that the 2014 adopted noise contours are based on activity levels twice as high as those contemplated in this airport master plan update. Additionally, the 2014 adopted contours confirmed SMF has no incompatible land uses based on either noise or safety. Furthermore, the implementation of this master plan will not trigger incompatible land use based on, again, noise or safety. I do want to point out the reference of FAR Part 175 in this slide is a typo. Please, I said my apology for this typo. The correct reference is FAA Reauthorization Legislation of 2018, Section 175, which is required FAA to investigate and respond to Next Gen procedural concerns. Since that the 2018 law became effective, the department has regularly engaged with FAA to ensure that next opportunity to investigate flight path variations within the SMF Next Gen Departure Procedures is fully evaluated by FAA. The FAA also has assigned a community engagement officer to work with airport sponsor on noise concerns and the department is in regular contact with FAA's Community Engagement Officer. Next slide. In the earlier slide, I shared SMF's recovery from COVID and the projected growth. The next few slides will provide an overview of the plant development at SMF, particularly project to be included in the SMF Forward program. This diagram is ordered with north to the top and shows the existing terminal A and B in gray. This master plan not only contemplated future terminal and conquer expansion needs, but also included facing flexibility to meet both near-term PALS 2 and long-term PALS 4 demands. The near-term conquer expansion to be included in the SMF Forward program is to provide additional gates to meet PALS 2 demand. Although this diagram only shows the alternative for adding new gates to the west end of Terminal B showing brown, additional alternatives such as adding more gates to Terminal A were also included in the master plan. Also included in the SMF Forward program is a potential walkway connecting Terminal B and Concourse B. An ADA compliant and nearly maintenance-free connection between Terminal B and Concourse B is needed to accommodate future passenger volume and meet customer expectations. Like the previous master plan, this master plan also identified the need for new concourse to meet long-term PALS 4 demand. Instead of a new satellite concourse located to the west of the Terminal Apron with a connection to Terminal B provided by another automated people mover, the new concourse showing blue and yellow is brought closer to Terminal B and connected to the potential walkway. Next slide. Increasing passenger volume also result in the need for additional vehicle parking. Numerous parking solution were contemplated in this master plan, most of which are included in the SMF Forward program. For this diagram, north is to the left. Additionally, economy, additionally economy parking and new self-away lot, identified as number 23 and 22 respectively, both currently under design, will be constructed to the south of the existing economy parking lot and the AMP and gas station. A new shuttle bus parking lot with electric charging stations, identified as number three, will be located to the southeast of Terminal A and north of the solar farm. Terminal B parking garage, number 10, 18 and 19, which was contemplated in the previous master plan, is being carried forward including in the SMF Forward program. Terminal B parking garage is an enabling project for the, for a new consolidated rental car facility, which I will discuss in the next slide. Next slide, please. Again, north is to the left in this diagram. The primary objective of SMF Forward program include provide new, provide new facility to meet near-term demand, create a more walkable campus, enhance ease of access and sense of community, improve intuitiveness and sense of direction for passengers, reduce shuttle bus routes and eliminate the need for shuttle bus between terminals and the rental car facility. With an existing rental car facility near, it's used for life and not able to meet future demand. A replacement consolidated rental car facility for car ride is needed and is proposed to be located just south of the current parking garage. Additionally, a new ground transportation center or GTC is proposed to be located between Terminal B and the parking garage. The new car rack and the GTC will create and transform SMF to be a more walkable campus and reduce shuttle bus routes. Next slide, please. Again, north with this diagram to the left. The planned airfield development is intended to increase aircraft taxiing efficiency. These projects are long-term projects as there's no airfield congestion issues in the near term. The airport master plan update also preserved the runway extension to the east runway, which is on upper left of this diagram, but removed the third runway dedicated for general aviation traffic to the west, which is to the bottom of this diagram. As the updated aviation forecast no longer shows the need for a third runway. Okay, next slide. Again, north is to the left of this diagram. And this diagram shows SMF has adequate space to accommodate airport support facilities. The yellow areas identify commercial development opportunities. The blue areas are cargo-related development. Green area, the darker green areas are support facilities such as maintenance and aircraft maintenance and repair facility. The teal or aqua areas are general aviation for fixed base operators as a sector development. Next slide. This diagram shows the potential for build out of SMF in the 20-year planning horizon. Again, north to the left for this diagram. Just want to note that parcels immediate north of Alberta, all the way on the left-hand side, and south I-5, all the way on the right-hand side, were not included in SEQA environmental review because at the time of SEQA review, there was not enough development-related details for these parcel to assess the environmental impact. If a developer proposal is brought forward for these parcels, a separate environmental review under SEQA will be needed. The department intends to bring each development proposal to the Board of Supervisors for consideration when ready. All right, next slide. The SMF Forward program is estimated to cost between $500 million to $800 million. To finance these projects, the department has formulated a financial toolbox to identify various funding sources and match them with uses to optimize the amount of funding available and cash flow. Lesson on this slide are the various funding sources the department is evaluating and pursuing. Next slide. Two of which the department will be bringing to the board are changes to the rental car facility, the rental car customer facility charge collections and commercial paper to the board for consideration approval. Next slide, I would now transition to provide an overview of the EIR process. Because adoption of the final 2020 SMF master plan update would be a board of supervisor action, SEQA review is required. The board supervisor authorized county planning and environmental review to begin environmental view on this SEQA after the department presented the draft final 2020 SMF Airport Master Plan update to the board on July 28th, 2020. This slide identified key milestones of the supplemental EIR process. The next few slides will summarize the EIR process outcome. The keeps, the key supplemental EIR process milestones are: Notice of Preparation was published on September 14th, 2020. Draft Supplemental Impact Report. Draft Supplement Environmental Impact Report was published on May 14th, 2021. Fortified Review Period ended on June 28th, 2021. Per presented to Sacramento Planning Commission on August 2nd, 2021 and the Planning Commission to public comment, closed public comment period and drafted and directed per to prepare the final supplemental EIR. The final EIR includes responses to all comments. And lastly, the final EIR was published on January 13th, 2022. Next slide, please. The plant development identified this airport master plan would have numerous and various levels of impacts. The EIR process not only identified the impact, but also included mitigating measures and requirements to reduce these impacts. Impact which were identified to be less than significant are aesthetics, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, mineral resources, drainage, water quality, population and housing, public services and noise. Project-related impact that could be reduced to less than a significant level through mitigation measures are biological resources, transportation and circulation-related roadway hazards, air quality, short-term emissions, climate change, short-term emissions, cultural resources and tribal cultural resources. Next slide, please. Impacts that could not be reduced to less than significant levels are: In land use, conversion of agricultural land on air quality, mostly related to construction and operational emissions. On climate change, the overall development will increase greenhouse gas emissions primarily from vehicle and building operations. Next slide, please. Furthermore, impacts related to traffic circulation and biological resource also could not be mitigated to less than significant levels. For traffic circulation, impacts were related to increases in employee vehicle miles travel for biological resources, mostly due to removal of native trees. Next slide, please. Random comments received on supplemental EIR today were documented and responded to as a part of the final EIR document. Comments received on the draft supplemental EIR were mostly in these four topical areas, air quality, noise, sewer service and transportation. At this point, if the supervisor might, I would like to turn over to Joel Imman from PER to provide a more detailed overview of the EIR public comments. Joel?
Thank you TJ. Joel Imman here, good afternoon, members of the board. I am the environmental coordinator with planning and environmental review. My team was tasked with preparing the environmental document for the master plan update. And as you know, it was a supplemental environmental impact report. I don't have a lot to add based on TJ's presentation, it was very thorough, but I am available for questions. Also here with me on the team is Allison Little and Julie Newton, who also helped author the environmental impact report. To give a little color possibly to the comments that we did receive, we received 10 comments on the draft supplemental EIR. Seven of those were from agencies, two of those were no comment letters. As TJ pointed out, most of those comments were related to sewer service or transportation and air quality. We did receive comments from two residents as well, for a total of three letters from Mr. Kuhn and Mr. McKenna, who I also believe have submitted some comments for us today to consider. Those comments are mostly centered on noise, as TJ had already alluded to in the presentation. And we did fully respond to those comments in the draft supplemental EIR, I'm sorry, in the final supplemental EIR. But I'm available for any other questions you might have on the environmental document. I'm going to turn it back over to you TJ.
Thanks Joel, okay.
So next slide and the last slide. This concludes the department's presentation on the final 2020 Airport Master Plan. Any discussion the board would like to continue, the department requests the board to take the action identified here.
Okay, thanks TJ, appreciate it. Thank you Cindy, thanks Joel. All right, we'll go to board members here and we'll go to members like, Supervisor Serna, go ahead.
Thank you Mr. Chair, and thank you TJ and Joel for your respective parts to the presentation. With regards to the comments from nearby residents, both the ones that were mentioned during, I guess, the formal review period and the ones that we, or at least one that we received today, centering on noise impacts perceived or otherwise. This is something that I brought up during my briefing on this. Certainly Ms. Nichols will recall, but just for the record and to be very transparent here, can either Glenn or I don't know if Breeze on the call or not, but maybe someone from airports give us a brief primer on what specifically the community, the immediate surrounding community to the airport can expect from the fulfillment of the master plan, the implementation of it relative to noise impacts. The reason I ask this is that there's, at least my understanding is that there's much in the way of technology advancements for aircraft and other aspects of our airport activities that are necessarily centered on land use at the airport that I think is worth having people more expert in the subject matter than I maybe briefly address here. So Glenn, I don't know if you want to try and field that or Cindy?
Glenn, do my take?
You're happy.
Yeah, it was, okay, thanks.
Certainly, over the span of a master plan, this 20-year planning horizon, especially right now, there's a lot of potentially very exciting improvements that could come along. Exactly with the timing of those things. Exactly with the timing of those things and the scale of their application, still yet to be determined, but we're talking things like electric aircraft or alternate-powered aircraft that could fundamentally change the way aviation, as we've known it for nearly, let's say, 50 years, because of the introduction of jet travel has been. But exactly how that will trans, how long that will take to transform, that we don't know. With the airport is taking steps to make sure that if electric aircraft are brought into the mix, we're going to be ready to accept them and incorporate them into our operations. But for the most part, we don't expect, other than incremental changes to the way aircraft, for instance, the new Airbus A321 Neos and the Boeing Max aircraft, those are an order of magnitude more efficient and quieter than their predecessors, the original model 737s and Airbus's. But that is a stage increase, as FAA defines it, rather than a revolutionary increase. Still, when we did the 2014 airport land use compatibility plan update, we took a look at the forecast and re-applied it to a long-term scenario and still came away with, from a fundamental regulatory standpoint, that we have no incompatible land uses inside our 65 CNL, which is important because that is the threshold, both the state and more importantly, the FAA use for establishing eligibility for any other mitigation programs that might receive federal funding or other support. So in the context of the master plan, that is a important boundary that we have to adhere to. We are, as TJ said, we are engaged, recognizing that a lot of the people who are commenting on these are, live outside that boundary. Obviously, they aren't incompatible land users, but there are people that experience noise on a regular basis. We've engaged with them over the last few years, specifically on the next-gen issue. Others may arise as well. We establish and maintain a portal with the FAA and their community engagement officer to make sure that any opportunity that affords itself in a near term or a short-term span to take steps to either disperse flights or whatever else the FAA may consider that will not adversely affect safety or efficiency can be undertaken. So in the near term, we're going to work to achieve those things, but we do look forward to a day when fundamental transformation of the technology enables a more meaningful change.
Great, thank you for that, Glenn. You mentioned, you know, the electrification ultimately of aircraft, but certainly there have already been a number of advancements, even in standard fan jet propulsion relative to decreasing the noise impacts associated with overflight, correct?
That's true. And the aircraft that you see operating today, especially with the pandemic, the airlines are all taking a look, a lot of the older aircraft have been retired out of those fleets, those fleet renewal has been accelerated. So what you're going to see coming back into the fleet is the more modern, more efficient aircraft. And those efficiency goes on par with generally a reduction in noise as well, because less fuel, less turning, more efficient engines are going to produce less noise as well. So we're already seeing that. It's, I will appreciate that if you live near an airport and you hear it every day, the change may be subtle, but it is coming. And, you know, we take the benefit of that, but we're also working hard to make sure that we're ready for anything else that comes along so that we can make sure we make those investments to the benefit of our community.
Thanks for that. And then lastly, I don't know if it was mentioned in the presentation, but one of the greatest changes, at least that I understand, in the process of getting the master plan to its current form was the elimination of another runway, correct? And I suspect that that change in and of itself probably has some consequence in terms of the corresponding noise impacts. I didn't dive real deep in the environmental document, but I'm guessing that because we don't have that extra runway that we could make the inference that those noise impacts would be less, maybe not a whole lot less, because it really has to do with the volume of takeoffs and departures and arrivals, and that can happen on two runways as much as it can on three. But can you speak to, or can someone speak to kind of the consequence of taking that third runway out of the mix?
Sure. The third runway was originally conceived and intended to serve as a general aviation runway to keep that traffic separate from the commercial traffic that was on the airport's two primary runways. So it can be a little bit shorter and to the west of the two runways, if you recall. So from a general aviation standpoint, where that would be removed from the mix, so the general aviation aircraft would operate off the same runways as they do today. So that won't change. The elimination of that runway by and of itself doesn't necessarily have a very dramatic effect. We don't have a very high percentage of general aviation traffic at the airport. The time it was conceived, we thought it would grow, maybe more business jets, but we haven't really seen that. We've got other reliever airports that can support those roles as well. So taking that airport, that runway out of the airport's mix doesn't really have a significant change to the noise footprint. We also have traffic patterns already established that a lot of aircraft do operate to the west of the airport, more so than to the east. So it's, it's a little bit wider and a little bit shorter, if you want to look at the noise contours runway to runway. The elimination that third general aviation runway didn't really have a large effect.
All right. Those are my questions. Thank you, Glenn and Joel and TJ. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Other members of the board, questions at this juncture? See any hands? I just have one question before we then go to any public comment. You noted it, Joel, in your presentation, we, the comments that were received as to TJ relative to the master plan and those related noise to Mr. Serna's question a moment, questions a moment ago. You said we responded to the ones that have come in. We actually have comments today, so the final is before us. And I don't know if it's important for purpose of the record to note those and that they, I think you said they've been previously addressed in the supplemental EIR, but I want to be clear about that.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor Natale. Those comments have been addressed in the response to comments. They're slightly worded differently, but the comments and overall themes have been addressed in the response comments to those particular individuals.
All right, thank you, Joel. Okay, seeing no other hands by, from board members, and if there's no other questions, let's go to you, Madam Clerk. Are there callers on the line?
We do have a public comment. Could you transfer the call now? Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yes, in 2013, my wife and I bought a house in north of Thomas. We were buying near the airport, so we went out to the airport and observed planes departing south over the vacant land across the airport runway and continue for short distance before turning east to reach their destination cities. We stood in our new backyard about a dozen times before we finally saw one plane come over. It was not even close to our house, but across the lake. We bought and rented the house for two years and moved in in 2015. The first night was hot, and we left our windows open to get some cool air. Around 5:35 AM, we were woken by an extremely loud noise and went out to the deck to see a huge plane passing directly over our house. Another couple of planes came over our house before 7:00 AM and continued all day and night at most times a minute apart. We found that the FAA had started a new policy nationwide called Next Gen, where they essentially narrowed the airport departure pattern from a wide dispersed path consistent with the destination cities to a very narrow concentrated departure path, which now unfortunately came directly over our house. The FAA thought they could get away with this because while some people were being unfairly targeted, many people in Thomas now had no planes over their houses. They assumed these people, coupled with the many people who worked at the airport, who had economic connections at the airport, would drown out the people getting screwed. Essentially, their plan was to turn neighbor against neighbor and successfully prosecute a minority of Thomas residents. I went out to the airport now and noticed the planes no longer departed south over the empty fields crossing the airport as they had done from the very beginning of airport service, but now turned east while still at the airport prior to crossing over the freeway. This shorting of the south takeoff path caused the flight path that came directly over our house, now those are the other people unfortunate to be under the new flight path. I called an airport spokesperson, Bree Taylor, and asked why the planes no longer went even a short distance south over the empty fields directly across the airport, especially since the overwhelming number of flights were going to cities south of the airport. She said the vacant land directly south of the airport was a protected airspace of Travis Air Force Base. They had asked Travis to allow them to depart over the empty fields, but Travis said they needed them to keep those fields empty for the safety of their flights, so the airport could not use them. However, when we called Travis Air Force Base, confirmed, they said whoever told you that doesn't know what they're talking about or are lying to you. Our airspace does not even go north of Davis, and that vacant land had actually protected space of the Sacramento Airport itself. Why did the airport lie? If people are doing something wrong, they often lie. Every time I walked out to my backyard, there's a plane coming over. Every time I opened my side door to take out the garbage, there's a plane coming over. Every time I go out the front door to get the mail, there's a plane coming over our house. And before I go one half block to retrieve it and return home, another plane or two comes over. I ride my bike almost every day as I'm taking my bride out to ride, there's a plane coming over our house, but after I leave going either north or south, I see no planes until I turn and once again see planes constantly coming over our house. On pre-pandemic days, when there were suddenly winds or calm winds, we would get up to 300 planes a day directly over our house, at times less than a minute apart. Every conversation has to be halted every couple of minutes to allow a loud plane to pass. All we are asking is for basic fairness and government decency. There has to be a better way. Neighbor is fighting with neighbor. The new flights are unfairly screwing up the lives of people living directly under the new concentrated flight paths. Most of those flights are to destination south of the airport. If the airport had the planes only go a short distance over those empty fields as they had always done before 2015, there would be no problems or inequality. We sued to achieve fairness, but the court threw it out on a technicality, not on its merits, because a lawsuit was filed a couple of days late. We don't know what to do now. If anyone wants to know what it's like to live directly under the suddenly flights, departures, you're welcome to come to our house any day after 5:30 in the morning. Please come by so you can see what it is like. The airport is light every time we have talked to them. We are getting screwed. All we don't want is fairness. This is just not right. What we are asking is the airport to act as a decent government agency and treat its neighbors fairly. That is all. Thank you, Michael McKenna, North Latomis resident.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. We appreciate your letter, and I know, given the opportunity to read it into the record, and we did receive it earlier today as well, so thank you for your comments and for sharing your concerns. Do we have any other callers, Madam Clerk?
We have no other callers.
All right, then I'll bring it back to the board, and I see it's Surprising to hear every hand.
Thank you. So I understand clearly the frustration that Mr. McKenna and others have expressed about perceived and real noise impacts in the residential areas that are west of I-5 that are, you know, pretty close to the airport. You know, my wife and I have lived in Westlake now for going on 18 years. We have planes routinely fly over, directly over our home, and, you know, it's, I certainly don't want to minimize the fact that that is the case, but we actually did know when we purchased our home that we were purchasing a home that was close to the airport. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, and someone from the airport system can correct me if I'm stating this, but we did sign an aviation easement as part of our closing documentation for home purchase. I believe most, if not all, of the homes when they were newly constructed, so the original purchases were sold with either aviation easements or other disclaimers about nearby airport activities and aircraft flyovers. So again, it's not to argue or debate with Mr. McKenna or any of my other neighbors and constituents about the noise impacts, but this is an airport that has been in its same location for going on 55 years, I believe. And as development in the city of Sacramento proceeded to move northward, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing the effects of that now in terms of, you know, concerns that I certainly don't want to, again, minimize, but they are, they are valid. This, this master plan adoption, I think, not only will benefit the airport system and give us room to grow, but based on my earlier line of questioning, hopefully I was clear that I was trying to point out that there's still going to be plenty of room for improvement in terms of noise impacts that, some of which are associated with the, with the master plan, but I'd say probably more to do with advancements in technology for aircraft movements. So again, I wanted to, in the interest of being transparent, make sure that we acknowledge Mr. McKenna's concerns and others, but I'm certainly prepared to support the master plan today.
Thank you, Phil. Let me, before we go to the board for consideration action, is there anything else from airports, then, Cindy or TJ, Glenn? Well, we have the recommendation embodies, obviously, the certification, the environmental document. Anything else you want to add before I go first?
Thank you, Chair Natale. I think we've covered a lot. Thank you.
Okay. All right, with that, Supervisor Serna, did you wish to make that a formal motion?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to move the staff recommendation to adopt the airport master plan.
Second. Okay, so moved a second then to group staff recommendation as it relates to the Sacramento International Airport 2020 master plan update. And with that, then, if there's no further comments or questions, I'd ask the clerk to call a role, please.
Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natale?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you to our staff and appreciate the work. I know it was very voluminous. I had five binders, large volumes delivered to my office. I must say, I read every page, but I certainly got through a lot of it, and thank you very much for that, with all the attached dependencies, but a lot of work on this evidence, certainly a lot of work over many years here, so.
We know you read every page, Tom.
Okay, all right, well, very good. Thank you all. Appreciate your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, we're going to our off-agenda callers, if they've been in the queue, and then we'll come back to item number two.
All right, please transfer the caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. If you could mute the meeting in the background before you start talking.
I'm on my phone.
Can you hear me?
I can hear the meeting. Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you. Okay, go ahead and start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Okay, so it's come out that Supervisor Susan Frost has been working with groups like the Proud Boys and the Freedom Angels. These groups have been known to have a history of anti-Semitic, racist, and violent rhetoric. She chose to work with these groups on the Telegram app to help organize and facilitate a rally similar to the convoy rally organized in Canada. Groups like the Proud Boys and Freedom Angels, they're dangerous and violent, and they're towards eliminating rights for people like yourself. Once it spread that Susan Frost was working with these groups, she immediately distanced herself, but that does not absolve her for not knowing who she's working with. She claims she didn't know that these groups are violent. She claims that she didn't know that these groups were spreading the information that they were spreading. Susan Frost has a history of working with these groups. She claims she doesn't know what these groups represent. On top of that, Supervisor Sue Frost herself has posted on Telegram a 70-page Google Doc that repeated anti-Semitic tropes and also made claims like diseases or pandemics like COVID-19 don't exist. Supervisor Sue Frost has shown time and time again that she does not care for facts and that racism and violence are the true building blocks of her beliefs. That said, Supervisor Sue Frost should reflect on her actions and step down, though I doubt she will. Now, I may be just one person, but I will use everything that I have to challenge her seat. I will do whatever I can to come up with ways to help recall her seat, because we need someone representing the people. We don't need someone who's working against the people. Thank you.
Please transfer the next caller. Please transfer the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. This is Mackenzie Wilson. I am a community member and have been in Sacramento County for almost 30 years now. I too call to voice the exact same concerns as the previous caller. Today it did come out that Supervisor Sue Frost has been coordinating on encrypted channels like Discord with known domestic terrorists and white supremacists in efforts to bring a caravan here to Sacramento. And she's even gonna, she even bought the banner. She's buying the banner. There have been screenshots of this information posted. I'm sure the county has been tagged in a couple of it on social media. But I do call with concern around this, considering that Sacramento has declared racism a public health crisis. I do find this to be the antithesis of the kind of things that Sacramento is currently trying to build and work towards. And I do demand some sort of an investigation or something into Sue Frost's work with known domestic terrorists and white supremacists in this, in this county and in this city and across the state. It's gone, it's gone above and beyond. Like you're, you're out here buying the banner for him, Sue. You know, like it's, it's not even just like you showing up at their events anymore. Like you're buying their banners and you're helping organize to get actual white supremacists here on the streets of Sacramento. And I don't know if you remember, but the last time that happened, unhoused neighbors and, and people of color were beat the shit out of. And they were harassed and their, and their, and their arts was destroyed and their homes were vandalized. And they're, and they were targeted. And this is now, this is, this is, this is a very big deal and I, and I, and I'd like to see the board do something about this. Say something about this, denounce this. This is, I can't even believe that, Sue, that you're buying the banner for a white supremacist. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mackenzie.
Can you transfer the next caller, please? Hi caller, could you please mute the meeting in the background before you start talking? You have three minutes, so go ahead and start with your comments.
Hi, Board of Supervisors. I'm wondering, I couldn't agree more with the previous comments about Supervisor Sue Frost and really wondering what it's going to take for this board to actually hold her accountable for not only organizing with organized hate groups like the Proud Boys, because this isn't the first time that she's done this. In fact, she, like just earlier, or late last year, she was caught participating and speaking at an anti-vax event that had Proud Boys and organized militia members like, in the crowd with her, like literally collaborating with that. Not only that, but as, as was previously pointed out, racism as a public health crisis should include every aspect of this county government. And we need to root that out and call it out where we see it. Because it's not enough to just, that she just gets, like gets exposed like this in media, especially when there, if there is no consequence that follows afterwards. So what I'm wondering is, now that we know four facts that she has been organizing with like organized hate groups like the Proud Boys to, like to establish protest campaigns to disrupt, like to, to cause mass disruptions here in Sacramento County and the cities around it, what is this board going to do about it? You could censure her, you know you can, but beyond that, are you going to continue to give her, like give her leeway while she also organizes with people like Gabriel, or Gabriella Ingram, who was also instrumental in organizing all of the anti-vax campaigns and protests at this county board? Who multiple times shut down the board chambers because they were so disrupted and refused and putting people's well-being, health and well-being at risk while they refused to wear masks during the peak of the pandemic? Who else is she coordinating with? Why isn't there any kind of ethics investigation, which you all could call for, right? Is there any kind of ethics, like oversight body that, or a grand jury that you could convene to investigate her activities? Because she is a public official. I wouldn't be surprised if she's, if she can get this easily caught on social media that she can't be investigated for ethics violations using her official government accounts. I think that's worth looking into, but the question is, does this board have the will to actually do that? Because you're representing more than just your district, you're representing a county of one and a half million, many of whom are Black and Indigenous people of color that are targeted by people, like the people who support Sue Frost. That the people that she's organizing and collaborating with. Racism is a public health crisis here in Sacramento County and Sue Frost is emblematic of that. And I want to point out that if, if she was a Black supervisor, a Black woman supervisor that, she, like she would be dragged over the coals by some of you, by county officials, by people within her district for trying to organize for, like in service to racial justice with groups like the Movement for Black Lives or like, or other folks, like in the wake of George Floyd storyline, who was she also condemned? But then here she is organizing campaigns against, like against this county for things as silly as, like mask mandates and vaccine requirements and checks and COVID testing. So the, the onus is really on you. I'm wrapping up right here.
Okay, thank you.
Natoli.
Yeah.
What are you, like, what is this board, what is it going to take for this board to actually hold one of your colleagues accountable? Because so far, I have yet to see it. And as long, as long as you don't hold her accountable, she's going to do the exact same thing all over again. She's probably already doing that right now. Make it happen and do more. You have a lot of work to do and this is important enough to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hello, this is Gabrielle. I am calling in for obvious reasons. I got named in the hit piece as well. So there's a pattern here is that you get any time an elected official, and Sue gets hit a lot, operates from a place of integrity rather than party and stands out for their personal morals and essence, even if it's not popular. The liberal arm of the progressive socialist starts bashing on Twitter. And then they whistle dog to CNN and CBS and MSN and SACB. And literally since that piece came out on Twitter, we've got three articles smearing Sue Frost. Now, what did she do? Sue Frost sees that the working class, that we're in a class warfare. The elites, even those elected officials sitting in your offices right now, have been collecting a paycheck for the last two years. While the rest of us have been dealing with our businesses being destroyed, the middle class virtually being flushed out and half of my friends moving out of state because we live in the self-employed bubble and people's businesses are not thriving. I'm not even going to go to the race issues here because that's exactly where the argument always goes. When there's not enough factual evidence to support someone's claim against somebody, they pull the race card. I'm not going to go there. The truckers are organizing as a way to mobilize our attention to end the emergency orders around the nation. Their livelihood's at risk. You would have to be blind to not notice that our store shelves are already low. I was at Bel Air the other night as they pulled the two items for stuff to the front of the shelves to make it look like there's a lot, but there's not. So there are, you know, Walmart, Winco, their meat's low. How is that not affecting everybody here? There already is a supply chain issue and it's due to constant quarantines, constant testing and sending people home when they're not sick or due to mandates where private store owners are saying people need to be vaccinated or they can't work. So the truckers are trying to go on strike to say that's it. We will deal with temporary supply shortages until we get this figured out because the elected officials who I'm looking at on a Zoom screen are not listening. So how dare Sue Frost have the integrity to say, I recognize that I've been getting a paycheck this whole time and the elected officials around the county, cities and states are not the people. Listening to her constituents who are frustrated with being lied to by politicians and the media and being used as pawns as you accept COVID relief money to balance your budgets. How dare she listen and do what she swore an oath to do and uplift the Constitution and listen to the people who voted for it? I didn't vote for Sue Frost. I live in Kennedy's district. I haven't talked to the man in two years, even though I email and I call. But hey, so let's be honest here on what we're dealing with. So there you go. Do, do, do whatever you're going to do, but I, I support anybody who sticks their neck out. And Sue Frost sticks her neck out. So thank you.
Thank you, Gabrielle.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Uh, hello, I wanted to reach out and say thank you to Supervisor Frost for always speaking up, asking questions and doing the right thing, even if it's the hardest thing to do. Sue Frost, Supervisor Frost, you are a caring person, open-minded, willing to listen and ready to advocate. The freedom community has your full support and gratitude. The service you provide brings light to the darkness of the men sitting beside you, and I mean this literally. The men who are sitting, who are, who you're surrounded with, either they don't know the evil or they know it and they don't care. And I'm here to lift you up in spirit and let you know that you are very, very appreciated and that the work that you are doing is not in vain. Thank you so much. Continue the hard work. Don't give up. We have your support. You have our support. It's mutual. Thank you so much.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Okay. Is there precedence for an elected official working to harm their constituents? Is there precedence for an elected official working to ignore science that potentially results in their constituents dying? Is there precedence for an elected official giving voice to folks promoting anti-Semitic and similar views and extremist violence? Is it okay for an elected official to join a group and feign ignorance when confronted by these facts? Is it better if they were actually ignorant to the participants in a group they were a member of and gave de facto air of credibility? I'm all for opening up our economy. I'm all for getting to a place where my neighbors and community are healthy and able to thrive. And I don't find it necessary to do that on the graves of those who won't survive the process of stupidly opening early, stupidly removing mandates which protect public health and are science-based. Because here's the funny thing, dead people don't buy stuff. I know, rocket science. But there is a cost to those people no longer being able to purchase things to the economy. There is a cost to those people who incur large financial debt as a result of having inadequate medical coverage and being in the hospital for only a brief amount of time, let alone the folks with long COVID. I expect an elected member of this body to understand those very basic concepts and to make decisions accordingly. Not just to appease the most vapid, inflammatory and extremist voices among their constituents, but to weigh that and ensure that regardless of their worst intentions, the elected member would do what is necessary to ensure their constituents' safety in spite of their constituents' own willingness to harm themselves. It's disappointing to know that Susan is more interested in appeasing the most extreme voices than protecting the majority of her constituency by following the science. As shown by the Health Department, she has a hand in directing. It's galling that she would take their evidence-based views and hold them with the same or less weight than those of her non-science-based constituents' views which run counter to the entire scientific community across the world. A formal censure is called for and a reasoning to unwarranted and unforgivable ignorance as to the voices that she tacitly raised up by giving those groups credence and validity. You're all supposed to be better than that. Thank you.
Thank you, caller.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. This is Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. I am a licensed psychologist in independent practice, community mental health advocate and a resident of District 2. Boy, am I grateful that my supervisor does not fraternize with members of hate groups. I am calling to express my extreme concern that a local elected official is fraternizing with members of what the Southern Poverty Law Center identified as an extremist hate group. A group that has been known to frequent our state Capitol and harass our Black and Brown brothers and sisters and siblings, our community members. That an elected official who represents this county is on a messaging app, which even I, someone, a mental health professional that doesn't operate in the dark, as you all know, even I know that Discord is an app that is used for networking for these types of, of hate groups. That there continues to be these extreme views by this elected official harms the mental health of our community. And I want to uplift what other callers have said, reminding this board of the other resolutions and declarations you've made about racism being a public health crisis, even that this board would make decisions based on data and facts and science and not opinion. And yet here we are with another controversy of Sue Frost and feigning that, that she doesn't, didn't know that Proud Boy members were, were affiliated with her trucker rally. Are you kidding me? In this day and age and with the circles that she's been shown to run in? Are you kidding me? This board already has the grand jury report that came out today of how it was allowed that NavGIL have all the CARES Act funding and, and that was let go. There's a made consent decree about the, the abhorrent treatment of individuals in our jail. When is this board going to take accountability? You have the power to show members of this county that you actually care about their well-being, which is what mental health is. Please, as a mental health professional, exercise some concern for your constituents' well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Suttl.
Next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank Sue Frost for choosing integrity over politicization, political lines. Sue has taken the time to do research and can clearly see what is happening. And she has taken the time to listen to her constituents who have become increasingly frustrated with the politicians, the media and corporations all gathered together to commit absolute tyranny over the population. Shame on everybody else who, who isn't following suit. You guys took an oath of office and you need to honor that oath of office or resign your position. That's all.
Next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Tracy and I'm a concerned parent. I'm just calling because I want to thank Sue Frost for her integrity. We appreciate her. We appreciate her and all she's doing. I would also like to say that mandating anybody is wrong, and everybody knows this. And then to mandate something that does not have the full testing, we don't know what's going to happen. Us as humans deserve better, and everybody knows that. So please take that into consideration for your grandchildren to know that you stood up and did the right thing for everybody. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Monique Lopez, and I am a resident of California. I am just disgusted and appalled with the way these mandates have been taken towards us civilians and the dictatorship that has happened. AB 1993 is just disgusting to force somebody to choose between their career and their livelihood. SB 871 to mandate a child— And we don't even have any data behind this. We don't have nothing. And all of the CDC and the WHO and all these government officials are ignoring the data that shows what is proven. Masks don't work. These vaccines don't work. We can still catch it and spread it with being vaccinated. Why are we still getting it? And all these adverse reactions that are happening to people are just being swept under the rug, like if they don't even care. And having this emergency authorization over us, if we can host a Super Bowl with 70,000 people with none of them wearing a mask, then we can sit there and unmask our children. We don't need to be in a state of emergency. We don't need to sit there and have these vaccines mandates because they don't work. They don't work. Sue Frost, I want to sit there and give you a thumbs up, you know, for choosing integrity, choosing to stand with the people, because none of the government officials are standing. I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, you are not choosing to stand with the people. And you know what? I think all—this happened for a reason because it woken up a lot of us, not allowing for you guys just to make the decision, because you guys all forgot you work for us. We don't—you don't make demands and sit there and place them upon us. You are supposed to be the voice for the people, and you guys have forgotten that. And you need to be reminded that you need to sit there and be our voice, or we're not going to vote you in again. We need to save our children from the tyranny. We need to stop these mandates and allow the people to go on with their life, because if we could host the Super Bowl and our great Governor Newsom could sit there and be taken many a times without the mask pictures and being in restaurants, and same with Mayor Garcetti, you know? We don't need to sit there and have the masks. All you guys wear the mask as a show because all behind closed doors, we know you're not wearing the mask. It's just for show. And us civilians, us—the people, we are tired. We are done. We already had over 100,000 people when all this mask mandate started. We already lost a seat. We—what's causing with these mandates? We'll sit there and lose more people to red states, and California will go under because more people will quit. Nobody is—if they haven't taken the vaccine, nobody's going to do it now. We're not going to do it, and we're standing our ground. We'll get fired because there's unemployment somewhere else, and we'll go to another state where we don't have to sit there, and we can choose our freedom. And you guys will be left without a job. I yield back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lopez. Thank you for your call.
Next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Asafoua, and I don't want to spend this time talking about the many ways that Ms. Frost has been disappointing, not only in this seat, but I imagine as she practiced medicine. But I would like to talk to the rest of the board. This is not like a rotten apple, right? One-off thing. We've seen this behavior, and I think that to sit idly by while one of your colleagues is openly supporting terrorists, right? This is the time to do something, to say something, to stand up. I don't know how your constituents can look to you for guidance or depend on you to make sound decisions if this just blows past your desk or eventually dies down. Anyone that openly supports racists in our community, anyone that openly supports fascism, anyone that openly supports the Proud Boys or whatever boys or any other boys you want to consider, has no place in your ranks, has no place there and should not be there. This is the time to say enough, Sue, enough possibly being racist, we see you, because this type of racism is direct, and it's not just direct, but you took your money, my tax dollars, whether that be in your salary or from your general fund, you took my money and supported racists to come into my community and harm my neighbors. And your neighbors, Phil, Mr. Natoli, Pat, your neighbors, your community members and your constituents, so y'all cannot sit by and let this go by like it's nothing. It's terrorism, period, point blank. Question for you, Sue. Where were you on January 6th?
Next caller.
Okay, thank you, caller.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm calling in support of Sue Frost. She is a true leader. She is showing people how they need to act as far as elected officials. She has integrity. She researches all the things that she needs to research, and she recognizes that we are operating under tyranny. She listens to her constituents, and I just—I support her. And I also want to say that mandating is wrong. We should not be under a mandate. Having masks and the vaccine and testing is all—only approved for emergency use only, and that—so we should not be mandating those things because there is no testing that is—that has happened with this. And that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you, caller.
Next caller. The last caller hung up. They're trying to get them back on the line. I think they have them back, and they're going to transfer them.
Okay, thank you, Lopez.
Well, as of right now, it's the last caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Okay. Hi, I'm just here in support of Sue Frost for choosing integrity over party, recognizing we are operating under tyranny and full-class warfare, and those that see that and pointed out are demonized by the media, the personal army of the upper class to keep them in line. Sue Frost listens to constituents frustrated with being lied to by politicians and the media and speak out. Politicians have taken it in oath and have responsibility to ask questions. Their constituents are asking. Thank you, Sue, and shame on those who refuse to do the same. I think you're an incredible person, and we all stand behind you and support you, and continue doing what you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, caller.
As of right now, you have no more other public comments, and I will just double-check, make sure no one slipped in. And yeah, no, that's it.
Okay, those were off. End of comments. All right, then I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Frost, do you have a hand up?
Thank you, Chair Natoli. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I do support medical freedom and our First Amendment rights to assemble and have free speech. I have reached out to help some local—a local small group that was collecting supplies to send over to the truckers. I was not aware that—I guess there's these people called the Proud Boys, okay? And there's this person by the name of Borwin who follows me everywhere I go and takes picture of Proud Boys and dubs them next to a picture of me, and then tells the world that I'm there with Proud Boys when I never even talked to the Proud Boys. So I think—I want to just say, you know, as a public figure, I guess you put yourself out there, and I, you know, can't always know what is on a person's mind. You know, I remember in the past, I've had experiences where I was, you know, working with someone who was renting a unit, and I collect their credit to see if I think they're going to be a good credit risk to rent my property to, and I call on all the references. And I had one person who applied, and he and his wife were very nice. He had a kitten in his arm. I checked her credit. Her credit was good. I checked every single reference, which was my habit, and it wasn't till the very last phone call that I found out that person had a record of battery and felony and all these things. So, you know, you can't, you know, at first glance, always know what someone's weaknesses or challenges might be. I have not—I don't know anything about the Proud Boys managing anything to do with the trucker—you know, that—for as far as I know, the trucker convoy project was just a way to be a voice. Early on in COVID, you know, when the nurses were being threatened that they were going to lose their job if they didn't get the shot, the vaccine, then I—you know, I stood up for the nurses. I stood up for medical freedom with the police. I stood up for medical freedom with the firefighters. I've supported the parents who want, you know, medical freedom and good conditions in the classroom whose children are impacted dramatically by the masking and the isolation of these COVID policies. And I've stood up for them. And so, yes, I still stand for medical freedom, and there's something else that I stand for, which I took an oath when I ran for county supervisor to uphold the Constitution. And part of that is our medical freedom. Part of that is my body, my choice. And so, there—is a—there is a lot of science around all of this. I have done a lot of research. I do want to have conversations. I've tried with the board, with all the board members, to have—you know, to bring more conversation and to discuss the science and to test, you know, the science, to have that conversation. And I—I don't—I get crickets. I don't get a response. And so, you know, I would love to bring the people that I know that have the information to have this conversation with the board. I'd love to do it in an open forum. And then, you know, if we're wrong, we'll be the first to admit it. I would love that. And the other thing I want to say, you know, you— A lot of the people who are speaking out today are making some very aggressive accusations around antisemitism and me fraternizing with hate groups. I'm a 65-year-old woman, for goodness sake. You know, I don't look that old because I dye my hair, but I don't hang out with killers and terrorists. I never have, and I never will. I don't condone anything that's not good for public safety. I don't condone anything that I think would be harmful. But I can tell you one thing. When I first ran for office on city council, I said I would research and investigate every issue, and I would try really hard to make decisions that are best for the community. And when I ran, I said I will never forget who I worked for. I also took the oath to uphold the Constitution, and I also, as a registered nurse, took the oath to do no harm. So when I look at the VAERS and I see, you know, all the deaths in the VAERS system, and I analyze the VAERS system, and we've—there's a lot there. There's a lot to know. No one will look at it. I do have questions, and I think, you know, I think we need to—now is the time to ask those questions, just to make sure. I mean, I'm not accusing anyone. I think our public health officer is a good person. I think all of my colleagues are good people. I just want to make sure we're on the right track. And it's clear that there's a problem when you have, you know, 30% or 40% of your medical community being fired because they won't—because they don't want to take that vaccine. And the same with the public—public safety, and the same with firefighters, and now the same with truckers. It's clear there's questions, and I think we should investigate it. I think we should have that conversation. And I'm not ashamed of anything I did. I didn't knowingly fraternize with—you know, I don't—they're saying it's Proud Boys. I didn't knowingly do that. I was just trying to help collect some crackers and cheese to send off the—you know, the truckers, but they—you know, the truckers are in charge of their—whatever their mission is, and they decided not to start from Sacramento. So they're not even leaving from Sacramento, and the whole thing got canceled a couple weeks ago anyway, so it didn't matter. So, you know, I'm telling the truth. I'm—you know, I—I— I am, you know, here to serve and try to do the right thing, and I'm not going to stop telling my truth. The day I have to stop telling my truth, then I—then my life is not worth much, you know, if I can't tell the truth. And if my truth is wrong, I'll be the first to say I was wrong. And then finally, I just want to say, you know, there is censorship. When we pass, you know, something that says that, you know, everything except for what the CDC and the FDA and the NIH says, everything except for what they say is right, when we pass that and say all other information is misinformation, then we're living in a world where we're going to tell people what is good information and what is bad information. We've taken something essential away from who we are as Americans. We are independent. We're independent, and we can't be independent without a thriving economy, without free enterprise. So when you kill all the businesses and you kill the economy and you, you know, bring all that down, you limit our ability to be free. So—and you—you can't—you—we can't judge what is misinformation for individuals. You know, every individual has to decide that for themselves. So I don't know. I guess I'm—you know, I'm—I didn't mean to create this, Supervisor Natoli. I am sorry, as chair, I did not to bring this on you. I hold you in very high regard, and I really do care about—I care about the people and our well-being as a community, and I'm not going to stop fighting for what I believe is the right thing. And so, with that, I don't think—you know, I don't think it's appropriate to tell me how I can spend my money, and I don't think it's appropriate to tell me, you know, to judge a person based on what one person posted on a Twitter. I don't know what else to say. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue. Okay. All right, with that, then.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue. Okay. All right. With that, then, taking our off agenda comments, back to the regular agenda, which, if, clerk, if you would please call that.
Yes. This, this is for item two. I do have to take an oath on this item. So I'd like to do that for the applicants and the applicant's representatives. But want to let you know that if we do get callers for that item, I'll need to take their oath as well. This is the 711 at Orchid Loop Lane, a use permit amendment, special development permit and design review for a property located at 8010 Orchid Loop Lane in the South Sacramento community. The environmental determination is exempt. So at this time, for those applicants who are on the line, if you could just let me know that you hear me, and then I'll need you to actually say something in the record. So if you could unmute yourselves. Do you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Okay. So please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And when you actually start to speak, could you just state for the record your name and then the statement I have been sworn? And you could do this at the time when you get ready to provide your testimony or your statement. And that's, that's all that I have, Chairperson.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Nathan. And others join us that wish to weigh in on the item, I will administer the oath at that time. Okay, with that, we'll return to the Planning Department. And Mr. Puhli, I believe you're up.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, Board members, Chris Puhli with the Planning and Environmental Review Division. I'll be providing the brief staff presentation for this item. It's an entitlement package to allow an expansion and rebranding of an existing auto service station and convenience store. Next slide, please.
Chris, brief, brief is really good.
All, 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 I will go through it very quickly. Subject site is a one acre parcel zoned general commercial located at 8010 Orchard Loop, southwest corner of Calvine and Power Inn Road. Property contains a roughly 2,100 square foot convenience store, drive-through car wash and auto fueling station, all constructed over 20 years ago. The property was recently purchased by 711. They intend with this project to rebrand the site. To that end, they are requesting a use permit amendment for a 590 square foot addition, as well as a special development permit to allow up to 225 square feet of signage and a design review. Next slide. This slide shows the site plan. The addition to the convenience store would result in a 2,800 square foot building, which is smaller than 711's typical format. The addition would be added to the north of the building where the existing trash enclosure is located. The existing trash, or the trash enclosure would be relocated to the eastern portion of the site next to the car wash exit. Next slide. This slide, slide shows the proposed landscape plan. Additional finger planners have been added. I should also note that the existing condition of landscaping is quite poor and will be brought back to standards as a result of the project. Next slide. There are multiple design exhibits included in the report package. However, this is just the east elevation of the convenience store. Shows the refresh or rebranding of the market to the 711 concept. Next slide. Do want to highlight just a couple of quick points. The product, property is subject to an existing use permit granted by the board in 96. Those conditions of approval have been revised with this amendment. New conditions have been added, including condition 27, which requires healthy foods. The conditions and landscape plan also result in a significant improvement in the quality of landscaping. And then finally, conditions 39 through 58, which require the convenience store to apply best management and safety security measures. Next slide. The architectural plans were reviewed by the Design Review Advisory Committee, which are, and they are recommending the board find it in compliance with countywide design guidelines. Both the South Sacramento CPAC and the Planning Commission are recommending approval. Staff is also recommending approval. And the recommended actions are on this slide and in your report package. With that, I'll conclude my remarks and am happy to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Turn to supervisors. Well, let's go to the, yeah, let's see, supervisor any questions and we'll go to the applicant. So any questions by supervisors? All right. Seeing none, then go to the applicant. I believe, Mr. Mahoney, did you wish to make a presentation or any comments?
No. I will state, my name is Nathan Mahoney. I have been sworn in today, but I don't have any statement to add unless there are direct questions I'd be happy to answer for any of the supervisors.
You agree with all the conditions? Is that accurate?
Yes, I do.
All right. Madam Clerk, do we have any callers?
We do not have any public comments or callers.
Right. Then I'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, thank you, sir. I, I, at this point, first of all, I'd like to say that, you know, I think that this is an improvement to what is there. I think the applicant has done a very good job at working with staff. I appreciate staff and the thoughtfulness that they gave the conditions. This, as we've seen, has received unanimous approval from the, from Design Review, from the CPAC, from the Planning Commission. So with that, I will move to approve.
Okay.
Good. All right. With that, it's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation as outlined on this matter. There's nothing further than I would go to the court to call roll, please.
Serna.
Hi.
Kennedy.
Hi.
Desmond.
Hi.
Frost.
Hi.
Natoli.
Hi.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Supervisor.
Yes.
Chairperson Natoli, my apology. For items three, four, and five, I'd like to read those into the record and ask the board for a motion to continue to March 8th to the times of 2:15. All three items will be scheduled at that time. These are part of the general plan rounds. Do you mind if I just go ahead and read all of those and then you would call for a motion?
No, absolutely not. And if I, even if I minded, you're going to do it anyways. So just do it.
Okay. So item three is a general plan amendment to reflect changes made by other jurisdictions to the county's land use and circulation elements. And item four is the housing element, general plan amendment to update the county, county's housing element. And then item five is the Hickory Hanks Barbecue Rezone. It's a general plan amendment, community plan amendment and rezone, special development permit and design review. These items will be continued to March 8th at 2:15 PM and heard in that order.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thanks, Flo. And just would note, I know we're managing our agendas, but we do have, you know, I don't know what the time estimate is on these items. There are going to be called together, taken the housing element, previously and so forth. So I just, I, I trust, with good reason, you know, our county executive and our clerk to look at how we're managing the 8th of March, because I know we've got some other items that could generate some feedback.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Then, right into the record, do we have a motion to continue these items to March 8th at 2:15?
So move.
Move to continue. Okay. So we have a motion by Frost, seconded by Kennedy to move to continue items three, four, and five, as noted. Do we have any callers?
No, we don't.
Right. Then it's appropriate, let's call roll, please.
Serna.
Kennedy.
Hi.
Desmond.
Hi.
Frost.
Hi.
Natoli.
Hi.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Moving down to items, we continue from yesterday. We have, first item, item number six, if you'll call it, Flo, please.
Yes. So item six is the draft active transportation plan of 2022. And the environmental document is not applicable to this item.
Okay. We have a couple presenters. I don't know who's going to introduce it, but I do, I know we have Mickey McDaniel and Kevin Russey, I think, here with us. So is there going to be any introduction?
Hello, I'm Mickey McDaniel, Senior Planner at Department of Transportation. Can you all hear me?
We can.
Okay. Thank you. I will be presenting the draft active transportation plan today. I'll shave a little bit off of my presentation since I know it's been a long meeting. I am joined by Director, by Director of Transportation, Ron Bakari, Kevin Gusey, Principal Civil Engineer at Transportation, and Brett Hondorff, President of Alta Planning. Alta Planning is the prime consultant with Civic Thread, formerly Walk Sacramento, leading our public engagement and DKS Associates Performing Analysis. Our Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee gave input at every committee meeting, committee meeting for the past year and a half on the development, the outreach, and ultimately, the draft plan before you today. Our neighboring jurisdictions gave comments helping us to maintain connectivity across borders. Today, we'd like to share the draft active transportation plan with you all in order to update you on our progress and also to get your thoughts on whether there are other infrastructure projects or programming recommendations that you see as missing. Next slide, please. The active transportation plan is a blueprint for how walkways and bikeways will build out in the county going into the future. The plan will update and, and replace the 2011 bicycle master plan and the 2007 pedestrian master plan. It builds upon the ADA transition plan from 2019, which took a very close look at the level of ADA compliance in all of our existing sidewalks. The ATP builds upon that by looking at where we are missing sidewalk and prioritizing investment in filling in those gaps. We have four goals for the ATP. One is to improve safety for everyone, especially people walking, biking, and rolling. Two, to develop more connected bicycle and sidewalk networks. And three, increase access to parks, schools, and other community destinations via the bicycle and sidewalk network. And four, make walking, biking, and rolling more comfortable. Next slide, please. We kicked off in spring, we kicked off in spring 2020 concurrent with the COVID-19 pandemic. We held 23 stakeholder meetings just to start to learn about people's challenges. Where are people coming from? Where are they going to? How can we improve how, how they get to where they wish to go? We then came back with a second round of community engagement. We took the, we, based on what we heard from the first phase and the analysis provided by Alta and DKS, we formed infrastructure recommendations, which we put on a web map. We received about 3,000 comments and 830, over 830 survey responses from across the county, from urban, suburban, and rural areas. We had a second set of community workshops as well as a series of pop-ups to really get that public comment. And in a third phase of engagement, we posted the draft plan to the project website, walk by bikes at county.net. And we took public comment from October 25th to November 14th. Next slide. We held 20 pop-ups focusing on different areas of the county as well as different demographics. While this map shows that, that there were pop-ups that were focused on the environmental justice areas, we also had four countywide pop-ups and one pop-up specifically in the Delta. As far as trying to reach out to particular demographics, we partnered with ARP and focused on seniors. And then we did that with different community-based organizations, trying to focus on particular demographics. We were able to lean on the relationships that the CBOs already had to reach out all the way into people's living rooms. Next slide. I think I'll skip prioritization criteria. We can come back to it if you're interested at the end. Next slide, please. We took the results of public engagement and the analysis and we formed priority infrastructure recommendations, beginning with priority sidewalk gaps. There are 192 miles of sidewalk gaps in the county. Next slide. We, we identified 194 intersections where adding a, an enhancement such as a pedestrian bulb out or a leading pedestrian interval could make it safer to cross the street. Here, we're looking at one of the focus maps within the county and a, one snippet of one of the tables listing the projects. For the full list of projects and the map book, please take a look at the appendices. Next slide. Here, we're taking a look at examples of infrastructure improvements. I think that we are all pretty familiar with sidewalks and crosswalks from our everyday lives. So I will move, move on to rectangular rapid flashing beacons and pedestrian hybrid beacons. These are types of active warning beacons that use in a regular flash pattern to indicate to the motorist that there is someone trying to cross the street. In 2020, DOT installed our first Hawk Beacon, a type of active warning beacon on, on Auburn, near Watt. We have curb extensions, leading pedestrian intervals, median refuge island, slip lane removal. So a slip lane is a channelized right-hand turn, which makes it easy for a, a motorist to not slow down as they're turning right. If we are to remove those slip lanes, it reduces the level of traffic exposure that a pedestrian experiences, making it easier for, for them to cross the street. We also have no right on red restrictions. Next slide, please. Here, we're looking at bright priority bicycle projects. Again, this is just one subset of a table and one of the, one of the focus maps. We are recommending over 1,200 miles of bikeways in the unincorporated county. Next slide, please. This, these are examples of bicycle infrastructure. We have a class one path, a shared use path, which you are probably familiar with from visits to the American River Parkway. In our plan, for example, we are recommending a class one path for almost the entire length of Hedge Avenue. And it, and for the southern portion, we are recommending a class two. Another, the class two bicycle lane is a five-foot wide in-road striped facility. We have a buffered bicycle lane, which is the same as a bicycle lane with an, with an additional amount of width separating the cyclist from the people driving. A class three bicycle boulevard and a class four protected bike lane, which uses a, a physical separation between the bike lane and the motorist. In our plan, we have this listed as steady corridors. And the idea is that we will be studying these roadways for class four feasibility. Next slide.
Mickey, can I ask you before you leave out, please? Because you mentioned Hedge Avenue. Thank you. You, you got asked it before I got a chance to ask it. But so, you showed the example. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago with a particular development project. Where, I didn't find it in the charts. So where in the charts? You know, you got, you got pages, hundreds of pages. And I went through some of them trying to find, either, it wouldn't be sidewalk gaps. And so there was a, a separate call out for the.
Appendix C, you'll three, you'll see three sets of tables. It goes sidewalk gaps, pedestrian priority intersections, and then bikeways. So you'll see tables, then these two tables for pedestrians, and then a map book, which shows the sidewalk gaps and priority intersections. And then you'll see another set of tables with the, a map book just for bikeways.
Okay. So that's the table behind. Because I went, there was the two together, the pedestrian and the sidewalk gaps. And so I thought, if there was bicycle, there would be such, and I looked at the maps. And so it's behind there. Okay, go ahead. I'll keep looking.
Sorry. It became too busy to do it all in one map book.
I follow you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So they, our plan did not stop at infrastructure. We also made programming recommendations. There are education programs such as bicycle education. We want to teach people how to ride safely, especially young students. We have driver awareness programs. And this is a big priority for our SACback. They are encouraging us to, to make drivers aware. And so an example of a program is SCAG's Go Human Campaign, where they are encouraging motorists through signage to give cyclists even more room when passing. Encouragement programs such as social walking and. Encouragement programs such as social walking and biking groups. Next slide. We included infrastructure support programs such as wayfinding signage, distribution of bicycle maps, classes for bike maintenance and repair, and a bike match program. The Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates has a bike match program where they take donated bicycles and match them to essential workers. I've donated a bicycle myself. Next slide. Safe routes to school programs such as walking school buses and bike trains, safe passage and corner greeter programs. In 2024, DOT and Civic Thread will implement a, this region's first safe passage and corner greeter program in South Sacramento for the benefit of three elementary schools there. Next slide. We have more infrastructure support programs such as bike rack installation, bike share, and micro mobility, slow streets, school streets. Next slide. We're taking a look here at the schedule. So right now, we're in stage four. We're reviewing the draft plan and any input that the board gives us today, we will, as staff, will update the plan. And let's see. We took the draft plan to SACBAC in December. We got a lot of constructive comments from them. We took those comments along with the results of the public comment period. We went back, revised the plan, and then brought the revised plan back to SACBAC in, early in January and got their blessing there. We took the draft plan to Planning Commission on December 6th. The commission wanted to know about how DOT prioritized projects, how we would use the plan to go after funding in order to implement the plan. They overall were supportive of the plan. Planning and Environmental Review is currently working on an environmental document. They are on schedule to be circulating that document in, in March. They are seeking an initial study mitigated negative declaration. We should be back at Planning Commission in June, seeking final approval of both the environmental document and the plan. And we hope to be back in front of, in front of you all, the Board of Supervisors, in October of this year. Next slide. As children, we grow up on the sidewalk. Still now, it is where we stop and say hello to our neighbors. For part of every day, all of us are walking or rolling. Some of us are also biking. And whether we like it or not, we are all aging and growing less and less physically able. Today, we plan for Sacramento County where everybody can cross the street and ride a bicycle safely, easily, and more comfortably. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey, for the overview. Um, let me, um, go to colleagues. I, I got a couple of questions, but let me see if there are other questions or comments first. Okay, I don't see any hands. Let me, I did get a chance to go to the appendices. Wanted to ask you, again, it's, it's a little difficult to call out because I don't, there's, I guess, I don't know if they're alphabetical or by project number, but the project ID numbers aren't in any particular numerical order either, so, um, but if I went to page 565, I believe. It just caught my attention. I happen to know the street, but, um, 462 down towards the bottom there, Mickey. You pulled up?
Okay, sorry, I don't have it open. I.
Oh, it's okay. Anyway, it says Simmerhorn Road from Palm Avenue to Palm Avenue. Where does Palm Avenue intersect Simmerhorn Road?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that particular project, so I, I'd have to look at it offline.
Okay, and then, and, and match it up with 516 where it says Simmerhorn Road from Palm Avenue to Clay Station. I know where Clay Station's at. But Palm Avenue, I don't have a clue. I didn't know that it was in Palm Avenue, so, um. Yeah, you don't have to answer today, but I just, again, I've only had a chance, or I, again, I didn't see the appendices. I, they say, you directed me to it. I only got as far as the map, so.
Could, could you say that one more time, the project ID?
Or 462?
Okay.
And then matched up with 516. Yeah, I don't know where Palm Avenue is.
Okay. I'll need to look it up.
Yeah, that's fine. I wanted to ask you about some of the rural intersections. That one really caught my attention. And I'll just go back, maybe go to page 420 and use it as an example. There are many intersections throughout the suburban, urban, and, and rural areas. But when I look at the grouping there, page 420, down towards the bottom, you've got, uh, three of them in the rural areas. Dillard Road, Colony Road, Franklin Boulevard, Hood Franklin, Walla Grove, and the bridge at the River Road. And we have priority, no, 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 no. And I, I guess I, I, and they're all the same price. I'd be surprised if that's the case, but, um, I guess I'm curious, when we, we say it's okay because it's a four-way stop. And I know, and I, you know, Ron can speak to this because I, I get frustrated along with some of my constituents that oftentimes we've got traffic issues in the rural areas, people ask for a stop sign. And more recently, the answer's been no, than, rather than yes, because, well, you know, we got to have certain warrants and the board no longer has the authority to weigh in on that. And so we have controlled intersections and I, you know, familiar with all these locations. Um, they don't have high flow of pedestrians or bicyclists. Uh, Franklin Boulevard might, Hood Franklin Road a little more because it's closer to the Old Grove area. Uh, and then certainly in the River Road area. But how was it determined that they're not a priority? And I guess, secondly, if stop signs are seen to be okay, yeah, with the, you know, medium intersection always stopped, that seems to be enough of a control. Then, and yet, when requests come through, and again, this isn't for you, Mickey, as much as maybe for Ron, to look at locations, and I can say that relative, um, recent time that a number of locations where folks have asked for that because of either speeding, because of safety, because of lack of shoulders, for people who walk or bicycle and concerns about safety, that wouldn't all be correct with a stop sign. The answers come back to my office, well, it doesn't meet the warrants, or hasn't been enough accidents, blah, blah, blah. And yet, when we get a chance to put it on a priority list, they're, you know, they've fallen off. Basically, they're there in, in name only because, and I know this is hundreds of millions of dollars, this overall plan. When I look at just the numbers, it might be a billion dollars for all. I know, I didn't do the math, but, um, so I guess, you know, kind of a couple of questions there, maybe one for Ron, but certainly Mickey, maybe you can help with the charts here as to how, you know, you identify, but they're not a priority.
So we had four criteria, uh, as part of our prioritization criteria. Uh, one was a safety and access. And, uh, to your point, how does one get the points for safety and access? Uh, it had to be a project in, uh, along a roadway with a hot, an observed high crash frequency and have the potential to reduce or, or to increase safety as well as to reduce the level of traffic stress. So just by that metric alone, it's very difficult for a lot of the rural roads to get a lot of points under that criterion because of the observed high crash frequency. We see the, the greatest rates in the environmental justice areas. The, the second criterion is, um, is connectivity and, and connectivity and access. And there, we're looking at whether, uh, the project will allow a person to reach a community destination like a park, a school, uh, via the, the bicycle and sidewalk network. The third, uh, criterion is implementation. So we're looking at complexity and feasibility as well as community identified need. Now, you pointed out that, um, if, that there is also, um, that there is also a need to recognize, uh, sa, the perception of safety and whether, uh, the community is asking for it. And so that's where we put in those points. So if during the ATP process, someone said, hey, River Road, people are driving too fast here. Um, and while there hasn't, I have personally not seen a crash, I know it's going to happen, then we gave that project points. And then, uh, the fourth criterion is equity and that, and here we're asking whether the project is located in an environmental justice community or it's directly serving an environmental justice community.
So, so let me, let me direct you to a location to, it's, it's actually, uh, project ID number one, Dillard to Colony Road. We actually had a safe routes to school application some years ago. Again, Dan Schuman and even I think Randy Faustman worked on, so it goes back a number of years ago. We were successful. We looked for shoulders. We have, uh, you know, an elementary school there, uh, that has some walking. We actually have two elementary schools. We have a Christian school and a, and an elementary school. Uh, Algro Unified, uh, Consumer's Elementary, excuse me, Dillard Elementary. You've got a community center there now. Uh, you know, a half mile to the west, you have, uh, a small market with a service station, you've got the firehouse. And, um, you know, a lot of throughput traffic relative to rural roads along Dillard and certainly Wilt and the Colony. And so it made our list some years ago for a safer house to school. We never got it. The shoulders are just, just like they were 20 years ago when we applied for it. And yet this in, that intersection doesn't weigh, you know, that, that doesn't. So I guess I'm, I guess, again, I'm not questioning the criterion or even your methodology. But again, and, and, you know, I didn't scrutinize all the locations that I'm familiar with, and certainly I'm only one voice. But that's the type of thing where it just gets buried in a report. It would never rise unless you had accidents or some other, some other factor, because right now it's buried in here as a no. It's got some standard dollar plugged in there. And so, um, and I'm speaking in large part for the rural areas here now, because again, we have no shoulders for the most part. Traffic volumes, as they have increased throughout our, our, our county and community have increased. River Road for, and I'll go shift to you to the west where we actually put speed bumps on the River Road because we had such erratic traffic and I credit certainly, you know, our SACDOT, uh, and, you know, operations maintenance for that. And put stop signs and speed bumps in there, uh, and you're confined because you have a levee road. But I, I just, um, wonder about this, this exercise. We spent a lot of money and time, you've done a good presentation. And again, I'm not questioning your, the, you know, recommendations as much as, I, I'm wondering how thorough of editing the rural areas. And I see other roads in here that, you know, got, you know, $12 million price tag to put shoulders, bike sick lanes from Highway 99 to the county line along Twin Cities Road. You know, not in anybody's wildest dreams that we're going to $12 million to put bike lanes along a state highway. But, you know, may, you know, maybe some, some, in, in some future time. But so back to my point though, so I gave you a specific location where there is a school, a community center, two schools, a community center, a firehouse, a store, and we had a safer house of school, and it doesn't even show as a priority. What happened?
So, so Chair and totally Ron.
Yeah.
And the board, Ron Bakary, Director of Transportation. And I, I'll help address that. So we definitely do recognize, uh, in rural communities that, and you, and you know, we, we talk often about intersections that, that maybe do not need, do not meet the warrants and what else can be done. And, and you've mentioned a lot of the things that we've recently looked at implementing, uh, to try to work with those intersections. And, and I, you know, me, you know, increased lighting, uh, speed bumps, you know, many other things. But, um, you know, there is 1.4 or 1.3 billion dollars worth of infrastructure here. And it doesn't mean that we're not going to continue to, to try to address those intersections. Um, as you know, when we weren't successful in that grant opportunity, it's difficult because, you know, even in grant opportunities, they look at similar criteria such as, you know, the volume of, of pedestrians and bikes, um, where they're trying to connect to. Certainly in the intersection you mentioned, um, with a couple of schools, it still allows us the opportunity, um, to address and go after safe routes to school funding. So it, I just want to make sure that you're aware that, you know, we, we recognize, um, the need. Doesn't mean that that we're not still, we, we still don't have the ability to go after, uh, certain intersections that may, may not be the highest-ranked, um, intersection, but certainly, um, you know, may fit a safe routes to school application, may fit other opportunities, um, for funding. And so.
So how, how is it ranking done, Ron? You know, you know, my comments won't be critical of your department. Because again, I do work closely and certainly, as I said, and, you know, Mickey obviously has shepherded this project in recent times. But for example, it gets a 2.1. So, you know, I, how do I, with, with two schools and a former safe routes school application, I just focused on that one. How did it rank locations where you don't even have a school? And, uh,
Yeah, so Mickey, um, Mickey did mention the, uh, criteria in which this was based on.
Yes.
Um, again, when you, when you look at the connectivity, um, to, to different access points, but you, you, you look at the observed traffic stress, um, you know, certainly volumes and speeds. You know, I, I do understand and, and I do understand your point that in rural communities, sometimes they don't rank as high. And that's why we've get, been given a particular emphasis in trying to come up with ways we can, we can address the rural intersections and, and really been looking at some innovative, innovative ways of doing that. Um, but, but I, you know, again, I, I, I hear you loud and clear and I, I think we've been, we've been, um, and, and again, it doesn't mean that we're not, you know, we're not going to continue to move these projects forward and that they don't fall under, and aren't very competitive under funding opportunities. But the same reason we struggled to get that awarded as a safe routes to school is that they're looking for certain criteria similar to what we've used as the criterion. This, this to, uh, really set the stage for what the highest priority projects are.
Well, I get it. The volumes aren't there, uh, but we do have higher speeds going to rural areas and the vol, and, and, and the, uh, traffic counts have picked up. And certainly the larger vehicles now moving through some of those areas to avoid, you know, congestion and, and, and other, other, routes, you know, in and around through our communities. And so I just raise those as examples. Again, um, I recognize this is a big, big package. But, um, if I could, then I just want to go back to Hedge Avenue since it was a real focus. It is an area that's in a bit of a transition and I appreciate Mickey calling it out. So, um, where did it rank? Uh, I wasn't able to find a page in a short time here, so you can maybe direct it to. But what was its ranking and how do we, in light of, I think, some of the commentary we're getting from the community? And, you know, recognize there's a whole lot of projects could use the funding here and they're scattered throughout five supervisors districts. How does Hedge Avenue rank kind of in this chart?
So I'd have to take a look through, scroll through it, uh, to find.
I could, I tried to find it real quick after you got me to the right, right section.
Yeah, and Supervisor and totally Ron Bakary again, Director of Transportation. Yet we, um, so, uh, and we do have a meeting actually specific because of the comments that I made at the last board hearing regarding Hedge. And, and just so you know, um, Hedge Avenue is actually in plan areas, uh, to be a, uh, to, to receive what Mickey mentioned, which is a Class 1 facility. In addition for a Class 2 for the majority of it. So, um, again, it, it sets the stage for us to be able to, you know, certainly go after funding for it as a north-south, um, connection and, and certainly a, a more comfortable way, a place to bike and walk, um, probably due to exactly what we're talking about. Although I understand that it's getting increased volumes, it's nowhere near the volumes of South Watt, which it would, would relieve some of that pressure. So, um, we're, we're moving forward on that. Um, just, that's recent, you know, just recently as we start to.
Okay, so, so is it, it didn't necessarily get folded in all this, but it will be before we get to final? Is that what I hear?
That is correct. And it is already in specific plans that, 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 um, really give it additional, uh, really add some additional prioritization to it.
Okay. All right. That's enough for now. It's, since this, this is the, i- if we move on this today, this is the draft. Are we finalizing this today? Is that what we're being asked to do?
No, we're just taking comments on anything that, uh, you see is missing, anything that you think should change.
Okay. All right. Well, I think I've added my comments and certainly duly noted. I appreciate the response and maybe we can talk offline about a couple of the specifics. But I don't want to take up a lot of the board's time, uh, with those. So, um, let me go to my colleagues then. Is there any questions or comments about any of the streets or proposed improvements? All right. Seeing none then. Let's, Madam Clerk, do we have any callers on this?
Yeah, we do have one caller.
Okay, let's go to our caller.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, or should I say good evening? My name is Sue Schoolly and I'm the Chair of the Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee. Today I'm speaking to you on behalf of the, on the draft ATP, on behalf of the SAC Back Committee. The committee has reviewed and provided input on the draft ATP to staff and to the consultants over the past almost two years on numerous occasions. I believe it's approximately six times. First off, I want to say that the SAC Back is supportive of the draft active transportation plan. In light of COVID-19 and all the restrictions, staff and the consultants have done a good job on obtaining public input through the online surveys, the stakeholder meetings, the pop-up events, and the interactive documents placed on the county website. There is one item that was discussed at our most recent review of the draft active transportation plan that the committee would like to bring to the board's attention. The consultants used the SAC SIM regional draft modeling regarding commuting habits when preparing the draft ATP. SAC Back believes in light of COVID-19, employee recruitments and commuting habits of workers have changed over the past two years and the draft ATP may need to be amended in the future as a result of how businesses operate and how employees and the workforce commute habits evolve over time. Staff mentioned that this can be addressed at a future time during the amendment process. Again, SAC Back is supportive of the draft ATP and is looking forward to moving forward into the environmental phase and the public comment and review phase to help guide bicycle and pedestrian enrolling improvements in our county. Thank you for allowing me to speak on the draft ATP and thank you for creating the SAC Back Committee so bikeway topics can be reviewed and addressed for our commi- community. Thank you.
And thank you, Sue, and thank you to, you know, it wouldn't be committee if there weren't people like yourself and your colleagues who are willing to serve net capacity. So we certainly appreciate SAC Back's continued involvement, engagement, and certainly your contributions to this plan and to the other work that's going on to improve mobility for different modes of transportation, particularly those, you know, related to bicycle and pedestrian traffic. So thank you very much. Appreciate you calling in today.
That concludes your public comments.
Okay. All right, then I'll bring it back to the board. For your consideration, motion would be, these are comments and then it's a workshop. So the draft will leave us and we'll see this back some months from now, I trust, for the environmental document. Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Desmond, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Anatoly. I'm, I'm ready to make a motion to support. I just want to thank staff that gave me a detailed briefing the other day. I appreciate all the hard work, all the outreach. I, I, I think that there's some great work in here and I think some really great opportunities, especially with some of the funding sources for a lot of these, uh, projects that have been identified in here. And, um, you know, these urban communities, we, we've talked before, we're not going to be able to completely recreate them, but there is an awful lot that we can do to improve mobility and this ATP identifies a lot of those. So thank you, Mickey, for the presentation and I'll move approval.
Second.
Oh, you just take a motion to move on this or are we just, is it workshop? Are we actually moving this forward then?
No, oh.
No, no actions, no, no action required. So you hold a motion to the next time we see it. Okay.
That's correct.
You've had noted in comments again, thank you, Mickey, thank you, Ron, and thank you to our consultants. And, uh, well, with that, we'll receive and file and thank you for the workshop.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With that, then we'll move to our next item, item seven, which is our COVID update. So, Madam Clerk.
It's the COVID-19 update.
All right. We have Siobhan and Dr. Casirio, I believe.
Great, yes. Good, good evening, Board of Supervisors, Siobhan Gattari, Department of Health Services Director. And with me tonight, I have Dr. Casirio. I'm not sure if she's yet on the line, but I'm gonna go ahead and start giving some updates. I also wanted to let you know that Captain Dave Beckwar is also joining us tonight from the Sheriff's Department, should there be any questions. So I'll go ahead and jump into some basic updates and then Dr. Casirio can join us. Actually, she, she might be on the phone already. I will just, let me just ask her. Dr. Casirio, are you with us? Did I do see her? I see her. If she, do you want to take yourself off mute? Okay.
Sorry, I had not been, uh, included in the panel, so I wasn't showing up and couldn't.
You're here now, you're showing up.
Yeah. So why don't I ask you to start, Dr. Casirio, and then I will, I will go from there. Thank you.
Sure, so I will start with our update. And this time around, we decided that we would share with all the data that the state is sharing, was sharing with us so that you can see what's happening with COVID at the state level. And I think it will help to explain some of the decisions that have been made. So next slide, please. So on this slide, this shows you the seven day average of cases by episode date. Also shows you the hospitalizations and the cases are the blue line. The hospitalizations are the orange line and then deaths are the red line. And as you can see, especially as we got into the end of December and, and in, into January, that the cases went up very rapidly and that was due to the Omicron variant. And then you can also see that, uh, along with that, we did see an increase in hospitalizations and deaths. And there is the lag that we've been talking about. There's usually a two week lag between the cases going up and the hospitalizations and deaths. So this is just to be able to show you just how high the numbers went at the state level as well. Next slide, please. So with this slide, we wanted to show you a comparison with total causes of death, causes due to pneumonia, which is the green line, cause deaths due to influenza and deaths due to acute respiratory distress syndrome and then deaths due to coronavirus. Because one of the questions or one of the issues that we've had to deal with quite a bit, the questions that we've had to answer quite a number of times is individuals thinking that COVID is just as bad as the flu and therefore that we should not be concerned. But if you look at the height of these spikes, especially, you can see that with the red, the coronavirus, it went much, much higher than we have seen with the flu cases. And actually, this past couple of years, we have not had, had hardly any flu cases. And most of what we've seen is coronavirus. One of the other things that the state pointed out to us is that even during bad flu seasons, we, the total number of deaths due to the flu has been about maybe 5% or so. But with COVID-19, it went to 20% of deaths. So this again shows why there's been so much concern about COVID. And I did share with you the last time, um, the death rates and the increase in death rates. So this is another representation to show you in comparison to the flu and other respiratory illnesses. Next slide.
The Chair. It's true. I, I assume I have.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe, yeah.
Okay, sorry, before you advance the slide, actually, Dr. Siri, could you go back one slide, please? Yes, I actually, just so I have a, a good understanding of the chart is the, the red, the red bar that, where we see the spike in the beginning of this calendar year along with the, the cases spike. But if you, if you go to the left of that and you go back to the last place we saw the red bar go up considerably, was that the Delta variant? Is that when the Delta was raging? Okay.
That's correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
So that was in September. The dates are at the bottom, so that was around September.
So, I mean, what this tells us in part is that the number of cases was exponentially more with the Omicron variant than it was with Delta due to its higher level of transmissibility?
Yes, very accurate, yes.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Next slide.
Excuse me, I, I had a question on.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sue, yeah, go ahead, yeah, go back to the slide, please.
When you say cases, Dr. Casirio, you mean test positive or so they could be tested positive asymptomatic or they could be symptomatic? Um, this is all the test positives?
That's correct, yes.
So some of those could have been, many of those could have been people who were quarantined, who, who never had any symptoms. They were asymptomatic.
Quarantine is, is for those that are exposed but are not positive. If you are positive, then you'd be in isolation. And yes, there are people that did test positive but had either mild or no symptoms at all. I think it's important to recognize that COVID-19 can be spread by people that do not have symptoms. So that's the reason why even for people that had no symptoms, they had to be isolated.
Oh, okay, so, but this is, but in this chart, you're looking at the number of cases and that chart is including those that were asymptomatic and symptomatic.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Next slide. Um, I'll move to the next one if there are no questions with this. So this shows outcomes by vaccination status, the solid line. The, the chart on the left shows cases and the solid line for each of these charts is the, those that are unvaccinated. And then the two dotted lines for fully vaccinated and boosted. And this shows that for individuals that were not vaccinated, the cases were much higher than those that were vaccinated and those that were boosted with hospitalizations as well. And this is one of the points that we have been trying to press when we are talking to the public is the fact that for people that are not vaccinated, even with the Omicron, even though we know that the Omicron variant tended to be less severe, but for people that were not vaccinated, there was a much higher risk of hospitalization. And the chart on the right shows you deaths. And again, you can see that for people that were not vaccinated, the risk of death was much higher.
Dr. Casirio, can I ask you, so on that last on the desk, is, is that accurate? That actually the death rate was higher for those that were boosted than it was for those who were vaccinated? But how do you distinguish that? When I see that September, October bump there in the chart, it looks like that if you were boosted, you had a higher tendency to die than if you were just vaccinated alone? Or I don't know how you read that.
Oh, yeah, I, I think you're reading it right. I think it's also important to note that for individuals that have chronic conditions that put them at risk, especially if they're immunocompromised, if they're older, especially above the age of 65, and also that people that have diabetes, obesity, hypertension, they do have a higher, a higher risk. So it's possible that the bump that you're seeing might have been a couple of individuals that, um, even though they were boosted and when they did get COVID, they got severe disease and died because they had other chronic conditions.
But then how do you explain the, the dotted line running through that as being lower though?
From that.
Wouldn't it go, wouldn't it go up? Because if you're vaccinated, boosted, you're both. I guess I'm just, it looks a little like, you know, I, I, I understand the explanation what you just said, but.
Right.
Maybe, I mean, does that look odd to you?
Yeah, the bottom, the dotted line at the bottom is for those that are boosted. And you can see that in general, for people that were boosted, they're much lower risk of hospitalization, much lower risk of death. But again, as I mentioned, I think we also need to look at individuals' risks as well. And that's why we've been telling the members of the public and talking to them that you still need to look at your individual risk because even if you're boosted, but if you have conditions, other conditions that put you at risk, then there are some places that you probably should not be going if the risk of getting an infection is much higher.
All right, thanks. Supervisor Frost, do you have your head up?
Thank you, Chair. I might, I have a question regarding the, this information. Is this from the, where do, is this from the hospitals? Based on, um, where did you draw this information from?
This is from the state. It gets information on cases, hospitalizations and deaths.
And when you say cases, you mean cases of COVID? You mean, when you say hospitalizations, you mean hospitalization, they had COVID when they went into the hospital and deaths, meaning they died of COVID? Is that correct? Or, because there's other, um, there's other symptoms, you know, according to the VAERS, there's, and, and according to FDA and CDC, there's increasing hypertension and increasing other thrombosis and other illnesses. But this doesn't take into account other illnesses.
I, I think we need to make it clear that VAERS is for reporting adverse events due to vaccination. What I'm reporting here is outcomes due to people who get COVID and get complications, either hospitalizations and deaths. So this has nothing to do with what's in the VAERS database.
Okay, so it doesn't include all those other, other condition, any, any other, it's only conditions that were diagnosed as COVID, basically?
Absolutely, yes. That's, that's what I'm reporting on. I'm not reporting on anything in VAERS.
Okay, thank you, Doctor.
Next slide, please. Um, so this shows the vaccine effectiveness. The green line shows for those that are boosted compared to the orange line for fully vaccinated. And we do see, which is something that I think we are all aware of, is that especially with the Omicron variant, we did see a reduction in infectiveness of, of the vaccine, even though it was still at least 60% effective for preventing infections. You can see with hospitalizations, it, the vaccines did a lot better, held up pretty well with the, even during the Omicron surge, where hospitalizations and deaths, the vaccine effectiveness was at least 80 and above. Next slide. Um, I think one important thing that we need to point out with the discussions we're having with the different impacts of COVID-19 is the inequity and how communities of color and underserved communities have been hit much harder by COVID-19. Um, and this shows the breakdown by race ethnicity. I'm hoping that, I know it's a little busy, but I'm hoping that you can make out the different lines. So you can see for the African-Americans, that especially in the, this most recent surge, had the highest increase in cases. And actually, this is hospitalizations, so highest increase in hospitalizations. And then the American Indian, Alaska, Alaska natives also. You can see that those are the two that had the highest. But in general, again, for communities of color and underserved communities, they tended to have a much greater impact of COVID-19 for hospitalization than deaths. Next slide. So this shows the breakdown by age. And what you can see from here is that for children, communities of color, children also had higher risk of infection. And it shows you the, the arrows point to the age group. and it shows you the, the arrows point to the age group zero to seventeen. The black dotted line, the horizontal line, shows you the reference community, which is the white community, and then in comparison to that with the other, the other race ethnicities, and again, you see for most of the race ethnicities, it is above what is shown for the white community. And again, it shows you that for children in communities of color, they were, they had a much higher impact due to COVID-19. Next slide.
To the chair.
Sure, go ahead, Phil.
Dr. Casiri, on the, what is it? XS, X-axis here, it says zero, two, and four, so what is the, what is the unit there?
So that is, for example, if it's at two, then that means that it's two times the risk.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
And, and as you can see, the, the black dotted line is at one, so that is the comparison group for the whites. And then, so that means, for example, when you look at the Latinx and the zero to seventeen, it's at two, so that means that the risk for.
Is twice as high for that age group?
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Next slide, please. And this shows you COVID admissions for children aged zero to seventeen. And what you see here is especially as we started opening schools for in-person learning, and especially also as we saw the increase in cases due to Omicron, there was an increase in hospitalizations for children. So, and I think for Sacramento, just for Sacramento County, the number of children in the hospitals, I think the highest we got to was twenty-four, but this shows you for the entire California, so you can see that it did go up quite a bit. And again, this is because children being in school, they, there was, this is more or less a congregate setting, so there was a higher risk, and also, again, because Omicron is so much more infectious. Next slide.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So the vaccine rollout, were children, when did children start getting the vaccine? What was, I think the vaccine rollout in general was around December of twenty-one, or December of twenty-twenty, is that correct?
Yes, but if you recall, we started off with adults. I'll have to get back to you as to when we rolled it out for children, because we did have to wait until the FDA approved the vaccine for children, so I'll have to get back to you on that, but if I remember, it was somewhere in the summer that we started being able to vaccinate children.
I'm starting to hear from people that they got the vaccine and then they got COVID. And I'm hearing that as we moved forward, we found that the vaccine didn't really keep you from getting or spreading COVID, but the idea was that it was, in theory, to help us not, if we have, if we're in a high-risk, at-risk category, it would help us, keep us from dying, we wouldn't have as bad of a time with it, in theory. My question is, because you said when we went back to school, but they don't go back to school in December, they go back in the fall, so that, I was just curious to know if this graph coincided with what, you know, I was just curious to know if that might be part of it, that, you know, there could be a connection between, between that vaccine rollout and their increasing incidence of COVID, or whatever it is.
The vaccine does not cause COVID, so there could not be any, any connection between the two. And what you've mentioned about the, what, what I mentioned at the beginning with, with this chart, I said that one of the things is children going back into in-person learning, and also with Omicron, especially when you look at December, that's when we start seeing an increase in hospitalizations. But you can see that, this starts from November, you can still see that there were some cases of children that were hospitalized even prior to that. We know that the vaccine is effective, and it's not a hundred percent. And as I showed you with the chart prior, it's not a hundred percent, but we do know that for people that are vaccinated, the risk of infection, the risk of hospitalizations, and the risk of death are reduced markedly. So the vaccine is effective, and you bring up a good point, is that since it's not a hundred percent, that's why we still have to use masks. And I know that's a question that has come up a lot about why we are keeping masks in, in schools, is because we have this, one, this is a congregate setting. Secondly, this is a group that, where we still have very low vaccination rates. When you look for Sacramento County, I think the vaccination rates for school-age children is about thirty-five percent, so we still have a ways to go, and that's the reason why it's important, in addition to continuing to encourage vaccinations, is that we need to continue having the masks in schools.
Yeah, I, you know, I'd be curious to know the impact of the, the vac, the vaccination and versus the risk, because the children, you know, had like essentially a zero chance of getting COVID, and so, you know, I'm not sure why we're vaccinating the children, I'm still trying to figure that out.
Well, I think this chart helps to explain that, especially as we were having children go back in school, they did have an increased exposure, and therefore, there, an increased risk, especially when you have a variant that's very infectious like Omicron. So this shows you that children can get severe disease, they did get hospitalized, and we have had some deaths in children, and so for that reason, it still is important to get children vaccinated. I think the next slide gives additional information if we could move to that.
Okay, do we have, before we move to that, Sue, have you have any other questions?
No, it's okay, you can, you can.
Okay, no, I have Supervisor Serna, Phil, one.
Thank you. So I get what this chart tells us to a certain point, but of the, the admissions, I assume that that is counted when, you know, when someone is admitted to the hospital, regardless of the severity, and, and this only, this, what this doesn't tell us, correct me if I'm wrong, is those that ended up in ICU, correct?
That's correct, it does not show the proportion that were in the ICU.
Do we, somewhere buried in a, you know, a slide set somewhere, I think it would be fascinating, maybe for the next update, to understand for all popular, for all age groups, all cohorts, the percentage of ICU capacity that's occupied by the non-vaccinated population that are in ICU due to COVID. I don't know if that's something that exists, or something that could be charted, but that would help me understand, to, to an even greater extent, what the communal impact is when people refuse to get vaccinated.
Yeah, we, I don't have that right now, but I can definitely ask. As I mentioned, this is data that we're getting from the state, because the data that we post on our dashboard for hospitalizations, it gives us only the count, it doesn't give us some of that detail about age, about vaccination status. In order to do that, we would have to do a more in-depth review of the charts, and the state has been doing, and that's why they're able to provide some of this information. I can ask for information on breakdown by vaccination, but I did present some, a while back, with some information that some of the hospitals provided to us, where they showed the breakdown by vaccination status. And you could see very clearly that for the majority of the people that were hospitalized, and almost all of those in the intensive care unit, were people that were not vaccinated.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that I think we kind of understand that, that impact anecdotally, but to get the data that actually bears it out would be, I think, a good adjunct to the data that you're presenting currently.
Sure, I, I'll ask for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Phil, Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. K, for the, for the presentation. It's good to see you. I've got a question about, and thank you Supervisor Serna, I agree with that, I think that's, that's very important information to know. For the children hospitalized, I know this came up at the, at the state, there was some, I guess maybe miscommunication about some of these numbers, and excuse me if you already mentioned it, but for the hospitalizations or admissions, does this, are these, are these children who were admitted because of COVID? Or is it also children who maybe tested positive after they were, may have been admitted for, for another reason?
I don't have that distinction here, I know the state is looking at that.
I remember that came up, right? There was, I think there was some coverage about that, okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, Dr. Casiri, well, I think that information that Supervisor Serna and Desmond requested is pertinent, and I would also like to add that I, and I want to thank you for sending over information regarding the PCR testing, but my question on the PCR testing was, and still is, what cycle threshold is being used by, by the hospitals? And so, in other words, there, there is evidence that if you use a high cycle threshold, you could get false positives with the PCR test. And so, it would be interesting to me to understand when these hospitals are testing for whether or not someone has COVID, what cycle threshold they're using on these tests? Are they, is it standard with all the patients? Because they're getting extra money if someone tests positive for COVID. They're getting, they're, they're, they are getting extra money. So what, what I'm curious to know is, along with that information that Supervisor Serna requested, is, you know, who, who, who was vaccinated and who wasn't? Because we're making an accusation that people that are unvaccinated are somehow getting the disease more often, or having a higher incidence of the disease. But I would like to see the cycle threshold on this test, which was retracted by the FDA, by the way, at the end of the year. And also, I'd like to understand how, you know, each of the hospitals, if there's a difference in the, in the cycle threshold based on different patients, you know, what cycle thresholds are they using? The paperwork that you gave me said under forty-five, under forty, under forty-two. And so that, that just, that doesn't give me an idea of, of what the cycle threshold was. And that would, that would be pertinent to a lot of the conversations that are happening, scientific conversations that are happening around, around this test. And, you know, and the idea that doctors, you know, in the past, we've always had doctors practicing medicine, you know, the doctor would make the diagnosis, you go to your doctor and they make the diagnosis, if you're symptomatic, they treat your symptoms. And now, we're, we have sort of shifted, and we have a different policy now, where the CDC is handing down a rule that we all get a test, and if the test says positive, we have it, whether we have symptoms or not. And a lot of our information is based on that, so it's, it's confusing to me. So I think if I had that information, it would help me sort through and be able to see, you know, what the real, the overall picture is.
So a couple of things, I know you mentioned the word made an accusation. No one is making an accusation here, we are just presenting data and based on the information that we have. And the other is that as far as the PCR, the PCR is the test that, 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 the machines that are being used in the hospitals have different cycle thresholds, and I think I present, I sent you that information based on the manufacturer's specifications. As far.
Yeah, but basically, they just said under, I appreciate the information, they just said by machine, you know, under forty-two, under forty-five, under forty, does that mean you can do it up to four, they, they're saying you can do it up to forty and still have an accurate test, because scientists are saying that anything above twenty-four or twenty-six can give a false positive, so I'm just.
I, I think that, I think that the best is to depend on what the manufacturer is saying, rather than what other scientists are saying based on, I don't know what they're, they're getting their information from. So if you get a cycle threshold of twenty-five or twenty-six, that simply means that that person is very infectious, probably has a high load of virus in their system, but, and, and therefore, probably that is somebody who would have a lot of symptoms, might be in the hospital, or it also depends on the type of variant. For example, you may find that with, when we started seeing the Delta variant, we were seeing very low cycle thresholds, because people had a very high load of virus. Same with the Omicron variant, because it is so infectious. When you looked at the individual cycle thresholds, you would see a very high load. But the information I gave you is what, when you look at a machine, it gives you a cutoff, meaning that if, for example, the cycle threshold for the machine is at forty, that if anything below forty will be reported out as positive, but you have to look at other factors as well. And then if it's above forty, then that would be reported out as negative. So I, I, I don't know, I, I think that I'm taking up a lot of time, and maybe I can schedule another time to talk with you.
Well, actually, actually, I really appreciate it, but I, we don't have to take more time, really. What I would just like to know is, what is the cycle threshold that they're using? Up to forty-two isn't what I want to know, I want to know.
It depends on the machine, each hospital has a different machine that they use. I provided you with information about the machines that we use.
So are you saying they use the maximum, or can we get that information? I think we, I think it's pertinent information.
I, I don't think it is, because the doctors.
I think it is, I'm a county supervisor, I'm asking for information. I think if the state is, is bringing mandates on, you know, based on, you know, disease, that they're, they're telling all these, reciting all these numbers, we have a right to have some, ask questions and get answers. I'm not trying to be mean, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of this test, and, you know, how it works, and what cycle threshold they're using to detect whether, why are there people who have, why are there people who have it, but they're completely asymptomatic?
Because studies have shown that people who are asymptomatic can be infectious as well. And that's the reason why, especially at the beginning of the pandemic, we started seeing what we call community spread, where we had people who had no known exposure or to someone who they knew was positive and had not traveled, and yet they developed a disease. I really, I'm, I'm just gonna ask, because I don't know whether all the supervisors want to continue with this conversation.
I think it's appropriate just to see if you, we can get that information, I mean, I don't know.
Can't ask for it.
I, I don't know that I can get the information for each of the hospitals, we have eight hospitals. We have eight hospitals. Each of them uses several machines.
So I reach out to them and ask them, you know, I'd I'd be curious.
I think I can get back to you on that, if you don't mind.
Okay, that'd be, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Casiri. Thanks, too. Keep getting a couple more, a couple more charts here.
Sure, next slide. I think this is my last slide, and again, it just shows you that COVID-19 does affect children four times more deaths than the flu and eleven times higher risk of hospitalizations. And also, what I pointed out is that children in poorer neighborhoods were more impacted. And we still have a large percentage of our children that are not vaccinated. And so that's why we're continuing with the effort for vaccination of children. And also, again, that is why the state made the decision that at this time we would keep masks in schools. And I know Siobhan is going to talk more about the the masking mandates, so maybe I'll pass it on to her at this point and have her talk about it.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Casiri. Come back if there are other questions. So Siobhan, you're gonna talk about, as described by Dr. Casiri, I guess, about the the mask requirements that are still remaining. Are you also gonna cover, I know you said there was personnel from the Sheriff's Department on on the line this evening, too. So is somebody gonna give an update? It was pretty sketchy in the report that we received. Yeah, okay.
I will cover both. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mo.
So I'll start with the mandates. So as you all know, I believe Dr. Casiri rescinded both local health orders that became effective today, that rescension. And so both of the, one of those was the suspension of in-person public meetings. So public meetings can resume in person. And the other was the mask mandate that's local, that those were both rescinded. Also, what happened today is that the current statewide mask mandate will revert back to its previous iteration before the statewide mask mandate took effect last January, which still means that all people vaccinated and unvaccinated are required to wear masks in certain settings, and those settings include public transportation, indoors at schools, childcare, emergency shelters, cooling and heating centers, healthcare settings, correctional facilities, both state and local, and detention centers, homeless shelters and long-term care settings and adult and senior care facilities. So that is for all vaccinated and unvaccinated, still need to wear masks in those settings. Under state orders, masks will also continue to be required statewide for unvaccinated individuals in indoor public settings and businesses. So these include retail shops, restaurants, theaters, family entertainment centers, local state government offices. Fully vaccinated individuals are recommended to continue to use masks indoor when the risk may be high. So even when you're vaccinated, and this goes back to what Dr. Casiri was talking about, you know, there is still a risk, and so it's still recommended, although not required. Surgical masks masks or higher level respirators such as N95s, KN95s, or KN94s with a good fit are also highly recommended. And then, as Dr. Casiri was pointing out, the state has announced their intention to reevaluate the statewide mask requirement for schools on February 28th. So we expect an announcement about potential adjustments to school mask mandates at that time. So that is the mask mandate update. I'm happy to take questions, and I can give the jail update after that.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I think we have Supervisor Desmond. Go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, Siobhan. That's really, really helpful. I appreciate that. There's obviously been a lot of questions because this changed in the last in the last day. With respect to the schools, I have I have school-aged children right now navigating this. And just just to clarify, so the the mask mandate, the state now mandate that we reverted back to, it is not a mandate for outdoor activities at schools, is that?
Correct. That's in indoor activities. And yeah.
For clarifying that, and because that's where I've heard some of the confusion from folks. And the other thing, do you think when they go back, the state, have you heard, maybe either you or Dr. K, when they go back to look at the mask mandate in the schools, they may start, you know, kids who have been vaccinated, for instance, may not have the mandate apply. Is that what something they may be considering, do you think?
I'm gonna ask Dr. Casiri if she has more details, but I think they haven't given us a lot of details yet, Dr. Casiri.
And I'm asking you.
Right. We do not have any details, but I think that one of the discussions we've had with school officials even in the past is that they said that it it could be very difficult to be able to do it that way, where some children are wearing masks and some are not. So I think those are still being considered. I don't know what they will come out with, but.
But people are very eager for that, as you know. I certainly am. I see with my kids, you know, it's it's a challenge. So, well, thank you very much. I appreciate the the information.
You're welcome. Yeah. Any other questions about masks before I move on? Okay, and then just wanting to report with regards to the jail update, you know, that we have seen trends in the jail that have really mirrored trends in the community in terms of when the variant was at its peak, and we saw the peak in the jail on about February 2nd is when we saw our highest number of cases. I am sad to report that we did have another death the week of February 7th. That was our third total death for an inmate related to COVID-19. As of today, as of this afternoon at about three o'clock, we had seventy-nine COVID-positive cases in the main jail and a hundred and eighteen COVID-positive cases at RCCC. Once again, the average daily population for the jail, the census runs over about thirty-three hundred, which I know is challenging for jail custody staff and medical staff, and makes it difficult to contain outbreaks. But we are seeing a downward downward trend, which is very good. We continue to test routinely in the jail. We continue to offer vaccinations. And so with that, I am happy to take any questions. I also have Captain Beckwar on the phone who can answer any questions as well.
So I guess I would just thank you, Siobhan. So from standpoint of movement and activities within the confines of both the facilities, how has that been been limited and or not? Are folks still confined entirely to their cells or are they out of cell time? And when they move in and about the jails, when they do for different activities or medical appointments and so forth, they require the mask?
So masking is required in the jail by both staff and inmates. And with regard to movement, I will ask Captain Beckwar if he wants to add anything to that question.
Yes. Good evening, Supervisors. Captain David Beckwar from Rio Consumerist Correctional Center. We're still operating under, you know, outbreak mode as of current. Our numbers are continuing to fall, but we continue to adhere to very strict and stringent guidelines when it comes to masking for all parties, as was just stated, staff and inmates alike. And movement is not functioning as abnormal. A lot of our classes and other non-mission critical things that occur at the facility are temporarily suspended, will remain so until the outbreak is back under control. So doctors' appointments are absolutely necessary, and they continue. Inmates are separated into groups, whether they're in quarantine or isolation. And we're very mindful and work in direct coordination, daily, hourly, and all the time with adult correctional health and public health to make those decisions and give advice to make sure that we're making sound decisions with regard to movement within our facility.
Thanks, Captain. This is Supervisor Tulli. I just, so you're operating, as you said, under outbreak mode. At what juncture do you get back to a situation where, again, classes are important, obviously people's, you know, progression as they, you know, move to complete their sentencing or if they're there, you know, pre-trial, you know, I think from the standpoint of, you know, positive engagement. You've been, I guess, first part of the question, how long have you been in outbreak mode? Obviously, we knew when the spike began. And then, secondly, either determined by numbers or by some other measurements, when do you get back to a situation where you would have, you know, resume some of those activities, which, again, are important both to the certainly to the in custody folks, but I think important to just, you know, the mental health and welfare of the folks that are there, but also, I think, to our staff as well, so.
Absolutely. I think you you bring up some great points. Our reentry programming as well as education at all are extraordinarily important. So we're constantly putting those on the scale and balancing. We we will work in in concert with adult correctional health as well as public health to make those determinations. I think that we are on a very noticeable and obvious downward trajectory when it goes to numbers. And in fact, some of our latest COVID numbers are even lower, as previously stated with up-to-date information. I believe that Maine Jail is now under forty total cases as of this evening. And then when we look at RCCC, we're down to seventy-nine as of this evening. So we're gonna continue to monitor, but I believe that we're on a course that's gonna put us back to be able to restore in measured fashion a lot of these reentry education things. These things are important to mental health and overall well-being.
Okay. Again, thank you for that. I know you don't know for certain, so with the downward trends, you think that would be in the next couple of weeks? Or, again, correctional health is part of this, obviously, Siobhan and, you know, Domiano are certainly, I guess, a part and party to that discussion as well. But is there a kind of a threshold number? And I know you obviously have to isolate folks and such, but any idea?
I will see.
I think.
Go ahead, Captain Beckwar.
Go ahead.
I was gonna see if Dr. Casiri wanted to speak to that, just in terms of when, if there's discussion from a public health perspective about when we consider it not in outbreak mode anymore.
Of course, it's dependent on the numbers. And with the last outbreak that we had, we waited until we had two consecutive weeks of no additional cases. I I think that that we're probably going to do that with the with this situation as well. Of course, that is not including the the ones that are booked on a daily basis, because I know that even with the bookings, they do find additional cases that are people that came in with COVID.
So he said no additional cases. Do you have to get down to to zero then, knowing that everyone who's either been identified as COVID positive is either an isolate or being treated, hopefully that they're on recovering and and so I I get what you say, but what's the measurement then?
Well, that's that's correct, because the cases, the what we do is that every single day, when we get the lab results, we see how many new positives there are. And so we're going to wait until we have two consecutive weeks of no additional new positives. And we've done that before with the two previous outbreaks, so we know that it's 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 doable.
No, I know. I know it's doable. I guess I I am concerned, though, just from the standpoint of, you know, the same thing people in general with, you know, isolation and certainly, you know, already, you know, confined situations where exposure can, you know, as you said, it can be in outbreak mode, and that is very, you know, a serious threat to people's health and 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 lives, as we've heard from people in the past. But I guess I'm just wondering with that, you know, with some of those activities are very important to, you know, the mental health and well-being as well. And if you can't, if everybody's in kind of lockdown mode, I guess they can watch television, or they may have access to some of the handheld tablets and so forth, or reading materials, but it's pretty limited. If you can't do physical activities, let alone the reentry activities for classes and so forth, and I don't think we're set up, RCCC or Maine Jail would do those remotely. I I I, you know, I know this is a, you know, a difficult situation to navigate. I guess I'm just concerned that if this is prolonged, if that's the measure, we could be weeks and maybe months. I don't know. Hopefully not, but.
I, yeah, I I don't think it's months, but it's probably a couple of weeks at least.
Okay.
And and again, I probably Captain Beckwar can answer this better in terms of what they are doing to ensure that the inmates that are under lockdown, and the lockdown is by pod. It's not like the entire jail is on lockdown. So when a positive is identified in a pod, that's when they lock that down and then do the additional testing. So it's, and again, we've been working with them to try and minimize the number of people that have to be under lockdown. So I don't know if you want to add anything with measures that they're taking to address some of their concerns.
No, I think that's that's sufficient. I guess, unless you kind of want to add anything, that's fine. What is it? One other question. What about Mental Health Treatment Center? Have we had any challenges there?
We have seen some cases at the Mental Health Treatment Center as well, yes, but not to the same level as we've seen in our correctional health settings.
How about Juvenile Hall?
Very few, very few cases in Juvenile Hall.
Okay. All right.
You mean with the the youths in Juvenile Hall, right?
Yes, yes, that's what I mean. I mean, with those in custody wards. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Siobhan or Dr. Casiri or Captain Beck? All right, seen none. Thank you. I don't know if we have any callers that you want to stand by. You go to the clerk. Do we have callers?
We do.
Okay.
Transfer the call, please. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
All right. I looked it up. In May of 2021 is when kids between the ages of twelve and seventeen could first get the vaccine, well before that graph of COVID admissions started showing an increase. As of November 3rd, 2021, is when kids five to eleven could get vaccinated. So even if you say they caught it, which they can't from the vaccine, the increase would have started around mid-November. The chart shows increases starting past mid-November. What's confusing to me is why C was willing to risk his constituents' lives by sending people back to work or school on the relatively small likelihood that they registered a false positive. Even if they just have it and are asymptomatic, they could still pass it to someone who could develop a bad illness or die. Do we not care about our fellow human beings now, our neighbors, our community? And a few things that the overlap in the September, October, between the vaccinated versus boosted could be indicating is the fact that initially, we didn't know if boosters would be required, and those that first got them had the highest number of other diseases and conditions which could cause complications. If the booster didn't kick in before the previous vaccination protection had dropped off, there's a very high likelihood they could have caught it. Now, just a few questions for Dr. Casiri. Is VAERS a good tool to use to determine vaccine side effects? Is the data full of the potential for error, given that the data is self-reported? I know one scientist who has a test submitted a side effect of his vaccine as being him subsequently getting in a car crash. He checked it several months later, and the data was still there. Are issues of self-reporting likely to introduce these sorts of correlative but not necessarily causative indicators? Is it a good idea to have folks do research at home, or is it better that they depend on doctors or researchers familiar with the scientific method? Are you familiar with much peer-reviewed published vaccine research done by non-scientist laypeople? And also regarding the jail numbers, I'd like to ensure that the death number is counting all inmates, especially those in pre-trial who are merely there because they're too poor to avoid bail. Also, what are the statistics on the testing? We need to know how robust that is to ensure we are evaluating the positive number appropriately. I'd say we need month-by-month testing and positive rates to know for sure what portion of positive cases we were capturing. If the testing isn't robust, then the positive numbers will be artificially low. Also, who's doing the autopsies to determine cause of death? Is it someone who could be persuaded by the sheriff to keep the numbers artificially low by finding other causes of death rather than COVID being the indicator, which would end up making him look bad? Thank you.
Thank you, caller, for your your comments and your questions.
Okay, next caller. Hi, can you please mute the meeting in the background and then go ahead and start with your comments? You have three minutes.
Yes, I want to continue to thank Dr. Casiri, Siobhan, and and members of public health for their continued due diligence and objective reporting when it comes to this gross, this really dire emergency pandemic that we've been facing. One of the questions I'd like to know is like whether or not we, whether or not we track the number of, basically, the, if we track the vaccine status of people who are unfortunate enough to have died due to COVID or who require treatment in intensive care units during COVID, and if those numbers are provided, if that's something that can be added into these updates going forward, just so that we can have a clear look at the numbers of how often people have died, including those that have been either vaccinated or unvaccinated. I ask this because people like duplicitous line supervisor Sue Frost routinely share anti-vaccine information, like showing, routinely taking vaccinations status out of, like, out of context and present a false narrative that vaccines are ineffective. And there's a really simple reason that from anti-vaccination is wrong. And like, a relatively simple thing that I think governments can do to give people context around these numbers is when the number of vaccinated and unvaccinated people who have died or ended up in ICU is shown as a proportion of the total number of people in, say, the county, we might clearly be able to see the protective effect of vaccines. And just for a visual explanation of these per-population rates, you can look to places like New South Wales, or the Australian government's, or state, New South Wales, which publishes their figures for deaths and ICU by vaccination status weekly. When you compare the number of vaccinated and unvaccinated people aged fifty and over who had died or ended up in ICU due to COVID, it looks bad without any other context. These severe outcomes seem higher for vaccinated than unvaccinated people. However, if you were to show the severe outcomes of a proportion of all vaccinated and unvaccinated people in the county, you, we might be able to see that the number of vaccinated people is far larger than the number of unvaccinated people. This means that vaccinated people are far less likely to have a severe outcome from COVID. So now, showing the rate of severe outcomes per one hundred thousand people, you, like, you know, would allow us to also see the rate is far lower in vaccinated people. And it's because vaccines greatly reduce the chance of severe illnesses from COVID. And so because the sheer number of vaccinated people is far larger than the number of unvaccinated people, the total number of breakthrough cases outnumbers the number of cases among unvaccinated people. This also means that total number of severe outcomes is potentially going to be larger. However, when these numbers are put into context as proportions of the total number of people in the county, the protective effect of vaccines is obvious. When you plot the data as a proportion of cases by age group, we can also see that people, that although the risks go up with age, it also shows vaccinated people of all age groups are less likely to die or require treatment in intensive care unit if they catch COVID. I just bring this up as an example, because I'm really sick and tired, like so many of you, like many of you on this board, of listening to and watching the harassment that Supervisor Frost continues to inflict upon your health officer and health human services employees for asking for asinine data just to simply confirm her own bias against proven science that is overwhelmed, like, has overwhelmingly shown the effectiveness of vaccines, as well as the effectiveness of mask mandates. And I'm really still wondering whether any have anything to say about Sue Frost directly coordinating with white supremacists and a designated hate group to cause mass disruption over these mandates. Are any of you going to do anything about this? Is she going to be held accountable in any way? Or is she just going to continue to harass your county staff employees for asinine requests like this and continue to get away with organizing disruptions of our public meetings, as well as the work of health, of frontline workers, like, just for her own political point?
All right, thank you, Keon, for your suggestions, your comments.
Next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Hello, this is Gabrielle. Just, there are just under two million reported adverse events for all vaccines in VAERS, over half attributed to the COVID jabs, one million one hundred three thousand eight hundred and ninety-one, to be exact, twenty-three thousand six hundred fifteen COVID vaccine-reported deaths, one hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred fifty-five total COVID vaccine-reported hospitalizations. Still no word if the CDC or FDA is researching these, as they should be, but many of us can list people by name who have reacted, a few of us with a friend or family member that has died in relation to the jabs. Dr. Casiri dismisses this as irrelevant, yet she calls them safe and effective, dismissing evidence to the contrary. Given they do not prevent transmission, nor even deaths, and in fact, they're not even by definition vaccines, at best, they are therapeutics with a low success rate, why are they still being promoted and funded? For almost eighteen months, those of us calling in, emailing in, spiking in public comment have been dismissed as conspiracy theorists. Yet, everything we warned about has occurred. Never-ending emergency orders, freedom in exchange for COVID funding, economic harm, people being fired over their personal choices, their body, their choice not being respected, and vaccine mandates now. Check out Assembly Bill seventeen ninety-seven, a vaccine registry, Assembly Bill nineteen ninety-three, that all California employers must force their workers by way of fines to the employer if they don't make sure that they've been jabbed. This is public, private, and independent contractors. What do you think this is going to do with our already shortages in employees and the workforce and people moving out of state? Now, this, obviously, you all don't vote on state bills, but we have been saying for eighteen months that mandates are coming. Here they are. I'm not telling you this because I think that some of you are going to vote differently, though I see some of you asking questions, finally, that have been quiet for the last six-plus months to a year, and I respect that, so thank you for starting to think about things. I'm talking to those that are listening. This board has the moral obligation to fire Dr. Casiri for failing to focus on death rates, suppressing effective treatments, and pushing death jabs that don't even help against COVID. They have a duty to fire Lisa Travis for poor legal advice, as members of the public are segregated from participating in in-person participation based on medical disabilities. For counsel, for the council to continue the local emergency for the purpose of receiving fundies that is not needed if one looks at the death rate over the case rate. For assisting in fraud and perpetuation of a false emergency. You have all cried wolf so long that you have lost the trust of we the people. So I am talking to those that still comply, to stop it. Submitting to tests, wearing your masks when you know it doesn't work, just perpetuates this false crisis. Do people get sick? Do they need medical help? Yes, and it is the fault of those that say there are no treatments on them getting so sick they need the hospital or dying. There are treatments, people. Our future, our children's future, it's up to we the people, not them, not even this board, even those that are wanting, asking questions or speaking up for us. It's up to us. There, most of these guys are willful pawns in the crime of tyranny. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabrielle.
No other calls. There are no other calls.
Okay, thank you. All right, back to the boards, are there any follow-on questions? Siobhan or Dr. Casiri, anything you want to respond to?
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to, again, thank Siobhan and Dr. Kay for the update and the briefing. I think you heard one of the callers ask for some of the similar data that I asked for in the course of the presentation. So I hope that resonates with those that can help us find that data, if it exists. And I guess one of the things that I'd like to add to my request in terms of information is there's, seems to be a lot of rhetoric, and in my opinion, unformed rhetoric, around the safety of the vaccine, suggesting that the vaccine, being administered the vaccine somehow amounts to a greater health threat, including the threat of death, than acquiring COVID itself. So I would, it seems to me that that should be one of the more basic data sets that we could find and help illuminate this board and the public with, to kind of put to bed, finally, this assumption that somehow the vaccine is worse than the disease. That is so fundamental to what we're attempting to do to keep the public safe. And if it, if the data says, yeah, you're, you know, thank you for asking the question, the vaccine actually is more acutely dangerous than the disease, so be it. But I, let's finally put it to rest, so we can, like, move from the rhetorical and concentrate on the science. And that's, that's what I would like to see. To me, that would be one of the most fundamental slides or graphs, or however you decide to present it, that we could have before us that I don't think we've had in the past. Thanks.
So if I can attempt to respond to that question, I think that we've been asked about the VAERS database several times, and we have provided information, which is actually information from the database itself. This is a federal database that is monitored by the CDC, and it is an open database, meaning that anybody can submit information into it, either people from members of the public, or physicians, or anyone who is administering a vaccine. It's very clear on that database that the reason that they put it there is to be able to get, it's an early, a way of an early, a way of getting an early signal if there are adverse events going on. But I think it's important also to point out that the CDC very clearly says on the VAERS database that the volume of the reports should not be used as an indication of the adverse events that are caused by the vaccine, because many of the reports that are submitted in that VAERS database need to be verified. Basically, any physician can put in information if somebody has an adverse event after the vaccination, whether it is caused by the vaccine or not. We have seen that it works, because when we had the period of time where the Johnson and Johnson was stopped, because, and also, I want to point out that there are people at the federal level that are monitoring that vaccine. I mean, the VAERS database. So when they recognized that a number of reports were coming in with individuals that were having clotting complications, they then went ahead and requested additional medical records, because of course, with the VAERS database, it doesn't have the medical records. And then they had to review and came to a conclusion of what needed to be done. So it is useful, but you can't use it the way that a lot of people are saying, where they're quoting a million reports and saying that this is the number of people that have died. It's, those, that's information that has not been verified. We, the reports that we have provided for you is information that we have readily available to us. We have not had any additional reports of deaths due to the vaccine, and therefore, that's the reason why we have not provided that information to you.
Oh, thank you for that. So by the very absence of any statistics, it sounds like, on deaths that are directly attributable to the vaccine, it's, doesn't even, it sounds like it's worth pursuing. Is that, is that right?
I think the correct interpretation is that there are teams that are reviewing the data from the VAERS database, and they are monitoring to see if there's an indication of something that an adverse event, either deaths or even adverse events that need to be looked at. But at our level and the general public, the access that they have to the VAERS database, they don't have enough information to be able to make some of the conclusions that they have made. And again, there was also the question about the vaccines being effective. I showed you information according to what we have from the state about the effectiveness of the vaccines. So again, we are providing as much information as we have available. We're not holding anything back. We have told you about deaths, we have told you about cases, and we continue to monitor.
I appreciate it. I still would like, though, to see the data, if, assuming we can acquire it, that tells a story about unvaccinated versus vaccinated and that is using ICU capacity. I think that's super, super important.
Right, as I mentioned, that is information that is not readily available to us. It would require medical record review. I will put in that request, and I'll let you know how long it will take before it's given.
Great, thank you very much.
Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted to say I fully support information, and if this board would be willing or interested, I could bring, you know, some of the information and someone to speak to it about the data analysis of the VAERS and, you know, what statisticians are seeing in their analysis of the VAERS reporting. So I, I hope someone will say yes, at least look at the information. I think, I think if we only take our information from one side of the story, we're not doing our homework as elected representatives. I think it's important to look at all the information, just like we've always done. We can't just make random decisions about, you know, what is misinformation without looking at it. And, you know, then if, you know, then that's all you can ask is for someone to look at it. I'm not saying you have to agree, and I'm not anti-vax either. I've had my last vaccine in June of this year. So this isn't about that. This is about information that's, that seems pertinent to this issue. And it's not about me, I, it's not, I'm just trying to get more information to try to find my way through this. You know, I have, I feel I have a responsibility, and I think we all do. So would any of you be willing to have that conversation? On the board, I'm speaking to the board and to, you know.
Should I just say that anybody wish to present to the board? Obviously, there's a process for doing that, you know, obviously, within proper context. But, you know, just as we've heard this evening, calls from folks from different, you know, you know, views of the spectrum as it relates to, you know, the efficacy of both vaccines, but also, you know, where we are and, you know, and how we, you know, take that data. So, you know, folks can come to our board. I mean, I don't, you know, know that would be under this particular heading, but, again, folks are welcome. And I think part of the good news that Siobhan started out with, with the, you know, the, some of the restrictions being eased, that we're going to be back in board chambers, as I understand it, March eighth. And if folks wanted to present to the board on any topic, certainly as appropriate, you know, we can work to accommodate that, and obviously, you know, we want to know the structure of that, but we can do that. And again, we welcome that public commentary, and certain board members have ability as individual members to bring items to the board. They won't necessarily have to go through the chair, but we certainly want to work on the agenda. So we can accommodate different points of view and different, and different information as a part of our daily task at the little sessions.
Thank you, Chair Natoli. I reach out to you to, if someone wishes to come speak. I'm talking about professionals who might need a little extra time. Who might need a little extra time, but I'll work it out.
We can work on a time factor as, as you all know, because you all sit here, I've been a little more liberal on the time for callers and so forth, but I think it's appropriate. And these are important topics and again, appreciate everybody's patience for that, but we can, we certainly can work on that and we'll give. Proper notice so other of our health professionals others can be available to, you know, to weigh in.
Right, that would be good. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I I didn't say I don't, I wouldn't, it's not going to be a debate amongst. People in the professions, so that I I I want to characterize it that, but we certainly can accommodate folks coming to present to our board.
A statement of opinion.
Okay, um, Dr. Kessery, you were going to say something a moment ago, did you really, you wanted to? You were trying to respond to Supervisor Frost or did you?
Um, I'll follow up, but I think it's important that if you are bringing. Individuals to speak before the board that you are careful with the information that they are providing. Because there have been some studies. That have been done in the VAERS database, but by people who don't have access to all of the data, they're just looking. Superficially at what information is there. And so I think it's very important because we do have a platform where. And I believe that last year you did pass a resolution. That you want to make sure that you provide accurate information. So my request to you is that you do keep. Because in talking to some of the emergency physicians. Some of the heartbreaking stories that they have had to deal with are individuals who refuse to get. The treatment for COVID because of information that they have heard that makes them think that. This is not true treatment. There are also people who have refused to get vaccinated. Because of information that is not accurate and unfortunately, they have ended up either dying or with. Severe consequences. So these are not just, it's not just a debate. For some people, it has ended up with impacting their lives. So I think it's important for us to make sure we do that.
I I don't think it's, you know, first of all, I want to go on record as saying I did not support. A misinformation resolution. I don't believe in censorship and that to me is censorship and trying to. Elevate ourselves above the general public who we work for to say, well, we can tell them. What is good information and what is not good information. I think our, I I think our citizens have a right to. Determine for themselves and and they're highly, you know, they should be able to determine for themselves what is, what they consider. To be good information. I think we can try to weigh as best we can, all the information we can get and. And hopefully, you know, we'll make good decisions and good public policy based on. You know, the protocols that we set forth and I certainly respect your position and I appreciate your, you know, in your. Way you're trying to protect people and I I will make sure that you're in the communication loop as well. When I'm communicating with Chair Natoli, I'll make sure you're also in the communication loop.
And I just want to state also that, yes, I do believe that people. Have a right to make decisions, but there's a difference between someone making a decision on their own. As opposed to someone using a platform to provide information. That is then spread to a whole community. So and and my request to all of you is that as you're considering this. That you make sure that this is information that is accurate and comes from resources. That are reliable because people do listen to these board meetings. And I think it's important, they do listen to what you. Put your stamp on and so because of that position, I think it's important for you. To review the information and make sure that it is information that you want to put out. We have are dealing with a pandemic that has caused many deaths every day. My staff. Have to deal with individuals from the community that have community members that have died. And having to deal with that, having to deal with members. That are dealing with long COVID as a result of, you know. Well, I think after they recovered, but not recovered completely. So I, I think it's important that we make sure that the information that we provide is accurate and reliable.
And 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 thank you there for Dr. Kessery. So Anne, maybe you can assist with this, like say, we'll. Again, you know, individual members of the board certainly have, you know, have the right to ask to, you know, have. Folks address the board. They don't even need go through us. They can show up at any of our meetings, but I do think that. In light of obviously certainly previous board resolution in which there was not unanimous. Approval of, but nonetheless, I think with the the cautions and certainly the considerations that. Put forth here, Anne, I'd like to maybe work with you. You know, as we, as we look at this and, you know, and and frame it appropriately and certainly. I think with the noting the comments that we've heard this evening. If you're.
I certainly hope we're not going to censor public comment now. Oh, my series.
So so let me just say about not censoring anybody. We've taken public comment and we will continue to public comment. I think the request was. Supervisor Frost that we allow some time for presentation from folks who. Have, you know, particular perspective and and information they want to share and I think, but I consider it makes a very good point that. The platform from which we operate here in the public domain and one that's taken seriously and we. We have many points of view and we represent on this board, you know, one point nearly 1.6 million people. That we do our best to hear from folks and certainly deliberate the issues before us and and. None of us in our lifetimes experienced a pandemic except for the one we're currently in and I just, again, I I I want to be clear. We're talking about censoring anybody, but if we're, you know, at the request of you or any of the members.
I can get someone. I don't know if anyone.
Yeah, I know, I just want to say, so I'm not censoring anybody.
I just thought if I brought, if we brought more information, it would be good. So I totally understand what you're saying.
Okay, okay, yeah, because again, we're not, we're not going to censor anybody's public comment and. As much as even a few profanities come out here and that gets pretty close to, you know. Pushing the the button and call back and you try again, we've taken these public comments now and will continue to certainly. As, you know, as a board and, you know, in our in our due diligence here. So let me go to my colleagues. Anyway, Anne, you're fine with that. I just, I asked him.
Yes, we can certainly have a conversation about that.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Serna.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, you know, I, you mentioned something about being liberal with the timer. I hadn't noticed, but.
Thank you, good. Next year, when you're doing this.
I'm sorry, I just had to provide a little bit of a, you know.
Time for a new watch, Rich.
No, but I I just want to say that, and I and I know that that. Chair Natoli worked with Supervisor Frost, but I I just want to throw out there that, you know, I I have a great deal of faith in our. Institutions, especially here in Sacramento County, our our public health officer, our 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 public health director. And and I and I and I am very confident that. Where there are issues in the science, certain things are unknown or where it's a, you know, it's sometimes a judgment call. Because things aren't 100% certain that they will let us know that Dr. K will be completely. Transparent and open and honest with us and and Siobhan as well. And so I just want to throw that out there because I. There's a lot of people that don't have that faith, but but I certainly do have that that level of faith and 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 I think you're you're well aware of. That, you know, the challenges that everybody is facing, you know, our constituents included and 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 what we all wrestle with. So, you know, I just want to thank you for that. Thank you for your openness and transparency and and understanding, so.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Thanks, Rich. Okay, Phil.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I just want to say. In response to Supervisor Frost's suggestion to bring, you know, her acquaintances or. People that she has trusted to share their opinions about. The response from either a medical or scientific perspective, that's great. I welcome that. But to your comment respectfully, Mr. Chair, that this is not going to become a debate. I will tell you and give you a preview of coming attractions. That because we did pass a resolution, regardless of who may have. Not supported it, we did pass it and that's a, that's a commitment to to make sure that we have a steady eye. Towards information that is credible, legitimate, factual. Steeped in science when it comes to something as serious as a medical pandemic. And so I'm telling the whole board that that's great. If if any member of this board wants to bring their. You know, cavalcade of of, you know, acquaintances to to come and. And provide this board what they believe is valuable information, hallelujah. But I'll be the first to line up people outside chambers. To refute anything that I I sense because there's only five of us that are elected and it's, we we have to, you know, make calls. Balls and strikes on occasion, but if I sense that it is constitutes misinformation. I'll be the first to use the same privilege granted to Supervisor Frost to bring in who I believe. Is got legitimate, credible, scientific, factual information to share. It's way too important. To, as I think Dr. Kessery rightfully pointed out. It's, this is way too important, a subject that's measured in deaths and lives saved. For us to be, you know, casual about. From whom we're gathering information, the type of information, how it's sustained. How it's considered credible and so I just want to make sure that there's no. Misunderstanding that that will be my intent if we're going to go down this road.
Well, thank you, Phil. And again, I don't, I didn't think I said it wouldn't be a debate. I, again, if people want to debate the issue and or. Again, welcome, you know, just as you said, all of us have the ability to. You know. Reach out to folks and to, as you said, to have a open and honest discussion, which we do. All, just every time we're in session about matters, you know, of great magnitude and some of 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 smaller magnitude, but. Certainly as the chair and on behalf of my colleagues, you know, again, however we want to proceed on this. Again, you know, recognizing, you know, the individual, but certainly the collective responsibilities that we have. You know, we can, you know, work to arrange it and if, you know, we set the time aside and we can, you know. And again, have our experts and those who, you know, sit with us on a regular basis and, you know, we have the. You know, the public's interest as a part of the same commitment we have and, you know, I'm talking about Siobhan and Dr. Kessery and. Anne and the rest of the folks, then we can do that. And again, it's not to make bad use of our time, but I think. And we're spending some time on it anyway, so I would, again, I, you know, I I I'm. Open to hearing from my colleagues and again, you know, recognizing this will be a commitment of time just in the in the public setting, but to your point. Supervisor Serna, I concur that this is, you know, too important to not have, you know, the. Realm of information, recognizing that, you know, we have experts that sit with us on on a regular basis and those are the folks that we depend upon, as does the public, so. But that's, thank you for your comments. Okay, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you. I'm just going to go a little further and say that. You know, it's not censorship to keep people from passing on dangerous information in a public setting at our podium. You cannot yell fire in a theater. And and I will tell you that I have no interest in participating in legitimizing conspiracy theorists. Who have already been debunked by our public health staff, who I have full capable, who I think are fully capable and have my full faith and support.
Thank you, Patrick. Okay. Appreciate the comments from my colleagues and. Work with the, with my colleagues and certainly with the county executive and our administrators on. And how we would approach this going forward. So with that, I want to thank Dr. Kessery, Siobhan, thank you again for your good work and for being here this evening and that of your. Respective staffs and thank you Captain Beckworth too for being on the line. Obviously, we continue to work. Our way through very difficult times in our communities and so forth, and yet I think there's a, you know, tremendous commitment to helping our community be safe and. Healthy and. Again. We'll continue to work in that vein. So with that, unless there's any other comments or questions by board members. This, that'll conclude item seven this evening and. We'll. Pick it up at a, at another time. So, Madam Clerk, do we have any other items on the agenda?
Nothing. You have your county exec comments and then your supervisor comments, reports and announcements.
Okay, very good. Anne.
No additional comments for today.
Members of the board, I see hand up Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I won't, I'll try not to be too long here. I just wanted to, you know, pivot back to. Homelessness discussions we have and and we had a long discussion yesterday about our. Shelter, emergency sheltering declaration and and something that that. Strikes me very often as we try to identify sites and we engage with. The homeless community and our own, our own staff here at the county as well as community members. There's always a a big concern about what impact a shelter site might have in a community and and something I've been thinking about. Bringing forward to to all of you in terms of a potential ordinance is maybe establishing a. Safe zone or a buffer zone around any shelter space or safe car camping space or designated camping area. I I hear often from even even folks experiencing homelessness that they sometimes don't want to go into shelter space. Because they're they're worried that. The, sometimes the predators who prey on vulnerable people in the homeless community will make it a target, make that shelter a target. Obviously, we all hear from members of the community that are concerned that. The shelter space may become a magnet for for more problems in the community. So I I think by having a. A, you know, whether you call it a defensible space or a buffer zone around any shelter operation, I think it does a couple of things. I think. One, it will really help ensure the success of the space because you won't have some of these problems. Out in 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 front of a of a shelter and I think it will open up additional opportunities for us in in finding some of these sites in our, in our communities. If we can assure our constituents that it's not going to become a problem, that it's going to be a net benefit, not only for. The homeless who were who were trying to get into a safe and sanitary location with appropriate services so they can. Improve their lives, move on to permanent supportive housing, get the treatment they need. But also that that the the site is not going to become a problem for the surrounding community. So that that's something I've actually talked to. Our county council about and have asked her to maybe provide me with some some language that I I would present to all of you. And so I just wanted to throw that out there tonight and maybe see if 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 any of you had any any comments of the city of Los Angeles. Passed an ordinance very similar to this. So as I get some language back from our county council, I I will be bringing it back to the board to 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 discuss with with all of you. Didn't know if anybody had any comments about that now. I had one other item I was going to bring up as well.
So so this is, I, other members have hands, but you want to respond, any responses or comments to it? Yeah, Phil, go ahead on this one.
Yeah, I appreciate Supervisor Desmond raising the issue. I I'd be supportive. I think. You bring up a very valid point that sometimes can be an afterthought. And we can't afford to think about the complexities and and. How comprehensive we need to think about how best to serve our unhoused population. Without simultaneously understanding how do we manage the impacts and so. I think it's fair and worthy of, you know. All of us thinking carefully about it, quite frankly, and and if he wants to. Lead the charge on this, working with our county council's office, I'm I'm supportive.
I I I would just say certainly I'm open to it as well, Rich, I think, as we've talked about. This and, you know, obviously, if, you know, we, there's a example of a much larger community and, you know. What they may have, you know, put in place and so I think, you know, certainly to look to that, but also then how that might be tailored to our community is certainly to. You know, work into the context of providing. Safe sheltering for those that are in need, but also then what assurances come for. Others in the area who likewise want to remain safe and hopefully. You know, we can, you know, work through the the issues that might present themselves. So again, you know, I welcome the opportunity to. To hear more and to, you know, learn more about the approach and how it might fit into the strategies that we're currently. that we're currently employing to try to address, you know, what we declared a crisis yesterday. And we know is a tremendously challenging issue for people from all walks of life in this community. Any other comments?
All right. I had one other item, if that's okay.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So something else I wanted to mention, and I know we're all aware of this, and I'm sure you're hearing from your constituents as well. I had a chance to talk with Supervisor Serna about it because I know it's something that's near and dear to his heart as well. But, you know, we all knew about that horrific murder that occurred on the bike trail in Rancho Cordova. And it's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking and it's so disturbing. And, you know, my thoughts and prayers are with the family, of course. And my constituents are, I think understandably, very concerned about this, very concerned about their safety on the parkway. So I just, I wanted to bring this up tonight because I know it's something that's very important to not only our constituents, but to all of us. And I want to underscore the commitment that we've all made, largely under Supervisor Serna's leadership in terms of the parkway, but the commitment we've made to fund more rangers out on the parkway, to ensure the safety of folks, to fund additional resources out on that parkway. But I think we have to, we all have to acknowledge that, you know, there are some violent actors on the parkway. And most of the time, the victims of that are the homeless themselves out on the parkway. So, you know, I really think we need to move heaven and earth to do what we can to identify safe and sanitary and secure alternatives for folks who are camping on that parkway, not only for the safety of the homeless themselves that are out there, the safety of the recreational users who we represent, and for the resource itself. You know, I know Supervisor Serna and I have spoken to folks experiencing homelessness and have read the reports that some of them are actually moving off of the parkway because it's such a violent environment. They're coming off the parkway to get away from some of the violence out there. So we have a, I think, a real imperative to continue to make the parkway a focus. And I want the public to know that we do make it a focus and we are going to continue to be committed to doing that and making sure the parkway is safe and that we can find alternatives so we can get some solutions to the encampments on the parkway that are posing a danger to the homeless and to the parkway itself. And so I just wanted to throw that out there. I don't know if Supervisor Serna had any comments or anything to add.
Yeah, thank you. And to the chair, mighty hands raised, knowing that Supervisor Desmond was going to make those salient points. And I couldn't agree more with him. I mean, the board knows that almost every, just like when the seasons change in spring, you know, Serna starts getting on his park ranger soapbox. But, you know, I think we need to think beyond just kind of budget allocations and the things that we've done. And we've needed to do the things in the past that we've done to, you know, try and enhance safety on the parkway in particular. But, you know, the recent incredibly sad, you know, murder that occurred on the parkway, I think serves this board to remind itself that, you know, we have to, you know, we have to accept that we have an obligation to steward to the parkway to not just make sure it's an aesthetically pleasing place or ecologically vibrant, you know, recreational asset, but it's got to be safe. If it's not safe, then none of that can be enjoyed. And I think we're hearing too many accounts of, you know, the nature of the environment there. And I don't mean natural environment, I mean the safety environment. And, you know, it continues to become even more challenging for different reasons. You know, the pandemic has a lot to do with it, too. But, but I'm, you know, happy to, more than happy to say that I feel very strongly that I have a really astute partner in Supervisor Desmond, who shares the parkway running through the district he represents, as do others on this board. But that he is laser-like focused on it. And I certainly want to, you know, continue working with him and with our Director of Homelessness Initiatives and Liz Bellis, our Regional Parks Director and our Chief Ranger and others to make sure that we are leaving no stone unturned when it comes to, you know, doing things different, reinventing how we deploy our public safety personnel necessary. Basically, I think, you know, everything is fair game in terms of how we might pivot here to enhance safety on the parkway. And at the same time, you know, look after folks that shouldn't feel like that's the last resort to live in Sacramento County. Thanks.
I just note and thank my two colleagues. Obviously, I represent a good portion, segment of the parkway as well and actually where the, you know, tragic event took place very close to that area, District Five. But I guess I would just say, I think that, you know, with recent communication we've received that we're working to respond to forums that both Supervisor Desmond and Serna have attended in the community. And I think the tragic event, obviously, the murder of the young lady. And but we've had other deaths and some of them have been, you know, folks who were homeless that have occurred at the hands of others in the parkway. We're moving, you know, we had first fire of the season, I think, here a few days ago, a few evenings ago, fire season. We've beefed up support for, you know, a lot of the elements of maintaining the parkway, both in a safe condition, but also addressing issues we're aware of. But I guess I would just offer a suggestion, you know, as we look at how we focus in on this, that, you know, maybe spend some time and maybe in a workshop setting to talk about what the strategy is going to be. Because again, I know as we've, you know, tried to, you know, we're hiring folks, but, you know, how we best, you know, work to address not just the homeless conditions and address that, but just in the parkway generally. And I think that people are going to become more and more discouraged and less motivated to use the parkway. We already know that's true in some segments of the parkway. But if we continue to see the degradation and, you know, just tragic, tragic events like the one of the past week, you know, two weeks, that's just going to, I think, you know, bolster people's concerns that maybe that's not a place they want to visit, a place they want to use. And when things, you know, whether they happen in the cover of night or in the, you know, in the middle of the day, they're still bad. And so I don't know how my colleagues feel about it, but, you know, we talk about it in budget and certainly some of you are always on point with it. But it seems to me that we ought to talk about, you know, the bigger strategy. What are we going to do here? And what do we need to do? And it's not just about financial resources. It's about, you know, deployment of, I think, other efforts that we're making, both in the community, but certainly that have connected to the parkway, which links so many communities and neighborhoods and business districts and so vital to the, you know, way of life in this community. So I don't know, maybe, you know, Anne, working with you and obviously others, you know, that are on the call. And, you know, there are a lot of different facets to this. And it's not to make bad use of people's time. But, you know, we get this in bits and pieces. You hear from us individually, sometimes collectively. And I just think that, you know, some of the events of recent, not just the most recent one, probably are even more catalysts for, you know, can we do more? Can we do some things differently? And if not, you know, where do we think we're going to be six months from now, a year from now? If we, you know, if we can just continue to do what we're doing, which is a lot. But so I guess I got to pose that as a question, Anne. Maybe your thoughts, too, because I know you've been very thoughtful in this discussion as well, so.
Yes, I, we can certainly do a workshop as you described. But I also want to say, and I know it's never enough. So I want to preface what I'm going to say with knowing that it's never enough. But I do know that Bruce and Emily and Ethan and all of the staff working on this are, I can't even describe how committed they are and hard they are working to make this happen. And I was in a meeting this morning where I learned a great deal about all of the little detailed barriers that come up as we try and bring up a sanctioned campsite, for example. It is just incredible how difficult it is. So I am more than happy to bring to you what we're working on, what the overall strategy is. And I can't guarantee you it's going to make it go faster. People are working fast and furious and it's a very challenging issue. As I know, you know, I've talked with all of you collectively and individually about my thoughts on this.
I appreciate that. I guess I just say it's not just about sanctioned encampments. I think there's, you know, a lot of other things that we do that, you know, the interface and certainly points reference here of, you know, talking to them.
Yes, and I think we need to talk, I think we need to talk more about what we are doing as well. And we have a plan in place for that. Yeah, enough said.
Yeah, very good. Okay, all right. So more to come and we can, you know, certainly work through Anne on, probably my, you know, best to tackle this. But I think talk about what we're doing, what we need to do, what we, you know, might be able to do more of or better. So, all right, Supervisor Kennedy, you've been very patient to get your hand up. I think Supervisor Serna, did you have your hand up? That was the item you wanted to cover? Okay, Pat, go ahead.
Thank you, Don. So I made a statement yesterday during the meeting, but I want to be clear and I want to actually provide direction to Anne and her staff on this. I still believe in, and perhaps I'm wrong, and if so, then I'll say I'm wrong, but that we have to have opportunities for at least temporary shelter of whatever kind on county property somewhere, whether it's leased property, owned property. So, you know, I do not think that we have exhausted that. We talked yesterday a lot about, you know, trying to find private partners and real estate and here and there. I just can't believe that we don't already have opportunities we're not taking advantage of. So I would like to have a full audit of, and I'm sure that Mr. Gasaway has most of this information at his fingertips, of all county properties throughout the county of Sacramento, a description of what they are, what they're being used for, what their occupancy is, you know. And I'd be glad, Anne, to work with you and your staff to flesh out exactly what I'm looking for. But I think you understand what it is that I'm asking for.
I do, and we had that conversation this morning. And Mr. Gasaway does have that information. It has been presented to the team and I think some of you may have seen it as well. And there were, we're dusting that off and relooking at it again to see if there were any missed opportunities.
Thank you.
Anne, just as we talked about this, and again, you know, since redistricting occurred two months ago, the Boys Ranch obviously is now in District Four before we shared the common boundary there. But, you know, there's been discussion and we have about repurposing. And I, you know, certainly in the context of some grants that we were seeking that would allow for a program that would serve, you know, folks. Again, we're limited in the numbers out there due to some of the facility limitations. But, you know, I don't know how that's, how deeply it's been explored and where we are. And I do think as you're looking at this, again, you know, it's, we know there are certain issues with infrastructure. But we do have facility and again, you know, how it might be employed as far as part of the overall spectrum of providing services to folks. And again, it's, you know, it's rather remote, but it comes up in conversation all the time. And I know there've been folks, members of this board have visited. I've been numerous occasions about different ideas. But it sits there in, you know, basically a static state. And again, I, you know, I know there are limitations, but there, you know, as you look for bits and pieces to fit together here, it would seem to me there may, you know, there's might be room there within the context of what we do to help people to, you know, employ the use of that property, which we own and have facilities there. So I just, I bring that up and again, with some sensitivity, obviously, to my colleague who now represents the entirety of the area that encompasses the Boys Ranch. But I think that needs to be discussed, too.
So I think we've had some brief conversations about, well, we've had many conversations about the Boys Ranch. And yes, you're correct, there are many infrastructure issues out there that have to be addressed. There's also the issue of folks' willingness to go to the Boys Ranch because it is very, very remote. But, you know, we have looked at that many times. We are now looking at that for another purpose, getting, hopefully, potentially getting some grant money to use that for a purpose that would help support the homeless, you know, issue that we're facing, particularly those with substance abuse issues. And we're still working through that process of the grant funding to use it for work on the facility and the infrastructure. That is underway right now.
Yeah, but that's been underway for a couple of years. If that's the same thing I've heard about, you know, different, there's different.
Yeah, this is something a little bit newer. And, you know, I believe in Mr. Wagst, that can weigh in if I'm misrepresenting this, but I believe it's potential money from the state. And the state doesn't work terribly quickly on these kinds of things. But I do think we are still exploring that. Is that correct, Bruce?
Yes, Don, this is something fairly new. This is money more recently made available by the state, specific to behavioral health infrastructure projects.
Yeah, that's what I've heard.
Now releasing some information on some money we can apply for. And so Siobhan and I and Dr. Quist and others have been talking about this actively as a real possibility because some of those infrastructure issues that you just mentioned are potentially addressable with this funding. So this might be a real opportunity.
Okay, well, I would just say that I, generally speaking, that ARPA money might be available for some of that, too. Yeah. And but I'd heard about the behavioral health piece, but I just think it's time. Back to Patrick's question and the concerns we're expressing here. And Lisa, if we're getting too far, scans, we're under board member comments here, but you can watch us. Are we okay?
Yeah, it's fine. I mean, we're not making any decisions, so.
All right, Supervisor, thanks, Bruce. Okay, Supervisor Desmond.
I just want to add, I'm glad you brought that. I mean, I think it's good to have the discussion about the Boys Ranch because so many people have maybe a piece of the story or some misinformation. They don't, you know, I hear from people all the time, we probably all do. Why not just convert the Boys Ranch? And that could be the panacea, their silver bullet for all of our, you know, homelessness problems in the county. And people have to understand that that is not feasible, but the facility possibly could be used for something else. So I think it's a great discussion to have and to, at the very least, educate the public, but certainly to keep exploring some options we may have there and possibly some partnerships. We've probably all been approached by UC Davis or someone from UC Davis about forming some kind of behavioral health campus. So I think there are possibilities there and we should, as I mean, as Supervisor Kennedy or Supervisor Serna said, we should leave no stone unturned in this quest for finding solutions and finding locations that could serve a purpose for this crisis. Thank you.
Supervisor Frost, see who you had your hand up.
I just wanted to say, we, yes, we've had this conversation over time and wished we could utilize it. It would seem like such a perfect place for the, you know, to help us with the homeless issue. But the logistics was difficult because it was so far from all the services. But I'm glad that you're looking at other opportunities, Anne, and appreciate it.
Okay, any other hands? Not board member comments before we close this. So, had a full day. Thank you all. And I said the good news, we'll be back in chambers March 8th. Is that correct, Anne? That's the next meeting, March 8th and 9th?
That is correct.
All righty. Well, anyway, to all of you on Zoom and all who've tuned in this evening.
What was the date that we're going to be back in chambers?
March 8th, March 8th and 9th.
Oh, I thought you said 18th.
Oh, no, no, no.
I was going to say, I was going to say that's exactly two years.
We're going to get adjusted to the wire, just a little short of two years. Yeah, very good. Okay, very good. So, all right, well, thank you all. Have a good rest of the evening, safe travels, and we'll see you soon. Thank you, Flo.